Hello and welcome to the City of Pittsburgh Council Budget Hearings. I am Councilman Anthony Coghill and I chair Public Safety and Wellness. And today we have three departments. We have OCHS, which will be joining us first, and I welcome them to the table first. And we'll allow you to start with your presentation and we'll go to council members after that. And anything else that the director and you all want to add would be fine. So, thank you and take it away.
Thank you, Council.
Oh, I'm sorry, Peter, you have to do it over.
Yeah, I mean, you don't have to.
It's been a year, buddy. It's been a year. No, no, let's do it. Let's do it.
Okay.
Formality.
Yeah. The City of Pittsburgh created the Office of Community Health and Safety to connect our most vulnerable neighbors with the right services to make our city safer and more just. The office's mission is to serve marginalized communities that have been systematically isolated from society and victimized by an unjust system. Through the tireless work of frontline workers, public safety liaisons, and subject matter experts, they aim to address the needs of those living in poverty, experiencing homelessness or housing instability, substance use disorder, and mental or behavioral health challenges. OCHS is focused on the following categories: developing a continuum of support, co-response, people in need of support, trauma survivors assistance program, law enforcement assisted diversion, post overdose support team, reaching out on the streets, and community engagement and partnership. In 2026, there is a total of 48 full-time positions, which is an increase of one. Those are kind of listed out there for you. Overall, it is just an increase of $30,000. And then a summary of non-personnel changes. OCH's operating budget is minimal and covers things like workforce training, public health, and professional services and supplies. The portion in the Stop the Violence Trust Fund non-personnel budget is also very small, 1.5%. OCHS's operating budget for things like crime scene cleanup, a continuum of support, program contracting, and harm reduction supplies is around $171,000. And they have no capital items in their budgets.
Thank you, Mr. McDevitt. And then I shall turn it over to...who would like to go first?
Just do a quick round introductions.
Sure.
Lee Schmidt, Public Safety Director, City of Pittsburgh.
Charles Showers, Manager of Personnel and Finance for Public Safety.
Camila Larkoncheleki, Assistant Director for Public Safety overseeing the Office of Community Health and Safety.
I'll let Camila take it. Let's try one.
Yeah, so Director mentioned, when we first drafting this budget, we had some budget requests, but I'm happy to let council know that our federal grant was extended to support that team. So they mentioned the important work that we're doing in Pittsburgh. So they usually don't do a three-year extension, but this will be our three-year extension. So I was asked to give some goals, accomplishments of OCHS. So.
Okay, yeah. And as in previous years, we have prepared some brief slide presentations to kind of talk about the goals and accomplishments across the departments. We've provided printouts of those slide decks for today to all council members. And just if you'll beg my indulgence for one second, I'd just like to give a shout out to the personnel and finance team across Public Safety and thank them for their year-long efforts to ensure that we're adhering to all our fiscal responsibilities. So, and with that, we have...it looks like our slide deck is working today. So I'll turn it over to Assistant Director Alarcon to move forward.
Thank you, Charles. Perfect. So next slide should be our organizational chart. As you can see, the office has grown a lot in the last three years. So we wanted to really emphasize that growth and that operational support from, obviously from council as well. So we have the Roots team. The Roots team currently has four teams budgeted. So we have a Zone One team, which covers most of the...we're talking police zones. Zone Two, Zone Three was a new one that we added this year, and Zone Five. Then we move over to the continuum of support, where we have our crisis response team. We have budgeted for Zone One, Zone Two, Zone Three, Zone Four, Zone Five, Zone Six. So those are two clinicians that cover...currently, we have coverage in Zone One and Zone Two, and Zone Four and Zone Five. Then we have the...what you see in purple are all our grant-funded positions. So we have the post overdose support team. We also have the law enforcement assisted diversion. We have our diversion center that was almost $2 million grant that we were awarded by the state. And we have a new program that we're going to be launching called Community Resilience, which is focused on responding to trauma events, but also advocating training for vulnerable communities, all our neighbors. And then we have, obviously, the operations team. So just wanted to give you a quick overview of the office. Next slide is the OCHS Citywide Impact. This is data that we got from our Gelato, which is our software database, since March of 29, 2023. We have, I'm extremely proud to say, 25,463 total all-time encounters since 2023, and 4,046 unique participants. Encounters can be anything from getting someone connected to Allegheny Link, to getting someone into a shelter, to de-escalating a situation, to providing transportation to a recovery facility, to an arrest diversion. It's any time we provide a service to a participant. The top three reasons for referral into all our programs are mental health services, high utilization of 911 services, and housing assistance. So I think this is pretty consistent with what we see in the city. So impact by program. The People in Need of Support Program, which we work very closely with a lot of council members here to provide support to our older adult population and decrease that high utilization of 911. I really want to emphasize that this team is very small but mighty. They have two BSWs, one team lead, and we really wouldn't be able to accomplish this amazing number, which is 8,200 encounters, if it wasn't for our partnership with FIRE and EMS through our Lieutenant Harosky in FIRE and Chief Deputy Chief...James Latauski. EMS has different classifications, but that team is very small but has really had a high impact in our older adult population. Reaching out in the streets, most colloquially known as Roots, has over 6,000 encounters. I really want to mention that we onboarded that team in 2023 and really didn't start hiring until 2024. So this is an incredible number. Our crisis response is at 4,416. Our law enforcement assisted diversion, 3,358. Our trauma support assistance program, which we currently only have one trauma specialist who has done an amazing job really providing focused trauma services on folks. And then our post overdose team, who was our newest program, 733 service encounters. The next slide really shows the operational but service delivery growth that the Office of Community Health and Safety has had. This is how you see how we've been able to scale over time without burdening the city budget, but really looking at diverse funding. In 2023, we had 4,468 encounters, and as you see, that has continued to grow. In 2025, we're up to 12,000. I'm pretty sure we're going to hit that 14,000 mark. So we're really, really proud of the way we've been able to scale. And then when I first started, when I was first hired in the Office of Community Health and Safety, I know that we had motor pool cars, but it was really a priority for us to make sure that we could rapidly and consistently engage with residents. So we've built a fleet of 13 vehicles. This means both quick arrivals at emergent incidents and reliable follow-up, but also transporting voluntarily and nonviolent folks to where they need to go. None of these were purchased by OCHS using city budget, as they're mentioned, we don't have a capital budget. But we were able to purchase this from state funding and federal funding, and as well as donations. So you see the breakdown, but these vehicles have really empowered us to get to folks. Our response times are very similar to those of EMS. Our new crisis response team has an average of 10 minutes from when we are requested, and our post overdose teams are between 10 and 15 minutes. So that is matching the national average. These vehicles really allow us to not only provide services, but support folks, to take them to rehabilitation services, transport them to non-emergency medical services, supporting the operations of Roots on a mobile basis, and connecting participants to other service providers. A lot of service providers around the city don't offer that type of transportation, so we've really taken a priority in that. And then ensuring sustainability and acquiring grants, it's always been a priority. My background is in grants, and I have an amazing team, Program Manager of Operations, a DBA, and program managers that have written and competed with state programs and federal programs, and we've been able to efficiently continue to support and sustainably our programs. So we currently have Bureau of Justice Assistance grant. We also worth almost half a million dollars. We also have another Bureau of Justice Assistance to expand the law enforcement assisted diversion program in the city, almost $1 million. And as I mentioned earlier this year, we were awarded by the Department of Drugs and Alcohol Programs, almost $2 million to launch a diversion site that would be open from 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM. We also have a National Association of County and City Health Officials. We like to really make sure that we are at the national level, like, providing best practices. So this is a grant that gives training to our post overdose team to make sure that we are at the...follow the guidelines of the federal government, but also best practices. And then we have a SAMSA Substance Use and Mental Health Services that we've received three now extensions because of the great work that we've been providing. With that, we also have important contracts that we've been able to work that provide also important services to the community, like the Big Burke Licensing Agreement. We also have the Professional Service Agreement from the Allegheny Center Research Institute, which funds a lot of the operations for the Roots program. We have the Gelato Software License Agreement. We are a subrecipient in the Inside Out Agreement, and we have a lease in East Ohio for our Zone One Roots. Expanding operations in two years from 12 employees to the number that we're now has really been a hard undertaking and overtaking from our team. We have a very rigorous hiring process that involves a couple of rounds of interviews and making sure that we get the best folks into our teams. So in 2024, we had 30 positions open, and we did over 188 screens and interviews and hired 24 folks. That number of positions was increased last year with Roots, the added of the Roots team and a couple other positions. Just in this year, the team has done 236 screens and interviews, and we've hired 11 folks. This includes reviewing thousands of resumes and cover letters and making sure that all the processes are fair and equitable. So we've been building to scale employees over time. In November of 2022, we had 12 employees, and by November of 2023, we had 18. November '24, we had 34, and I know that now mentioned 48. Number of employees over points in time taken from the payroll data that we have. Eight employees have departed since 2023, all of which have received new job offers elsewhere because of their tremendous work in our office. We have currently 21 vacancies that we are still hiring for. So the office can grow to over 60 folks. Engaging with the community, building this community resilience program where this community engagement team, which includes clinical folks, but also people who specializes in community engagement. We've done 11 mental health and de-escalation and NARCAN trainings in the city. Those mainly come through the request of council or through the request of different business associations or other groups. We have expanded our harm reduction outreach efforts, so we've distributed over 1,400 NARCAN kits through community engagement while also doing training. And our other programs have also distributed over 2,000 NARCAN kits. So we've really been flooding the community with these lifesaving resources. We've also handed 545 gun safety locks to date, and then 234 only in this year, that has provided a lot of safeguards for communities. Showing up for our community is a priority, so we participated in every single city in the streets event, but we also host International Overdose Awareness Day with the county and the health department. We participate in harm reduction pop-up fairs with the health department, National Night Out, community public safety meetings, Southside Safety Resource Fair, the Women's in Public Safety Expo, several of different fairs hosted by healthcare providers like UPMC. We also participate in the Carick Community Health and Wellness Fair, and East Liberty's 40th Anniversary Community Health Fair, and Homewood College Career. So we really try to cover the whole city and provide those bridges from community to government. So from co-response to the crisis response teams, we wanted to ensure that the program was sustainable. We wanted to provide critical clinical trauma-informed expertise. We wanted to expand the coverage. As you know, we had a really hard time hiring folks. We didn't get folks that wanted to apply for this position as it was structured previously. And more importantly, we want to be aligned with grants and future billing structure, reporting requirements, and professional code of ethics. And the National Guidelines for Behavioral Health Coordinated Systems of Care, which aligns national best practices, are now suggesting that crisis units have two clinicians in the car, moving to what we currently are doing as well. That's from the federal government and from the state in order for us to be able to bill, which means that we would not rely on any type of city funding, but we would get billed through the federal government, through their different providers. So I think that's been a goal since the beginning of the office. That rule in Pennsylvania is requiring a two-person mobile crisis clinician teams, which is what we're currently doing. So we are following the best practices. What are the types of calls that we're seeing? We first, from pivoting from the old model to the new model, we wanted to ensure that all calls were related to a 911 call and that they were following crisis. So what does that mean? We are responding to mental health crisis, suicide and homicides, community violence, evictions, DOA or unresponsive persons, domestic violence, sexual assault, child welfare, large-scale incidents or disasters, and bystanders CPR. We, in every situation, police always clear the scene, and they request us. Just Monday, we launched that they request us through the radio, through 911. So that's a huge win that makes this incredibly sustainable and ties it to our public safety response. Additionally, now we've opened it up so that EMS and FIRE can also request the unit. As we know, EMS also in a lot of situations encounters crisis, so we wanted to ensure that we could open it up to the rest of public safety, but also in the future, work with other city departments to make sure that we can provide that crisis support for them as well. The previous model in August of 2025, we did a comparative...we pulled the data and did a comparative study. In August of 2025, we had 32 total active responses, and we had nine officer vacancies. In September, we had 48 total active responses, and we had six officer vacancy. That means that we were only fully staffed in August 55% of the time, and in September, 71% of the time. With this new model that we launched in October 13th, we've had 76 total active responses in just those...in that timeframe from October 13th to November 7th. We've had 30 active responses in Zone Five, 39% of all the calls, which really indicated us why we made the decision to expand after Zone One and Two to Five. But with this new model, we can cover...a team can cover two zones. So we've also been able to expand to Zone Four, which is the second highest call volume we currently have. So we've been able to really serve those mental health gaps that that community had. Our average dispatch time is 10 minutes average over all those 76 calls, and I'm really proud to say that we have been 100% fully staffed since October 13th with two clinician teams. The clinical program manager is going out in the field every single Friday to ensure that there's no vacancies and that folks are receiving the mental health services they need. And I want to...none of this would be possible if we didn't have partners. This was one of my main goals when I was first tasked with...the Office of Community Health and Safety was building relationships with the county and other providers in our city to ensure that we could not only share those important conversations, informations, but we could get the support so the city wouldn't have to respond always on its own. Street Medicine Case Conference is including the medical services to the unhoused and unstablely housed who are at risk. We've learned so much, and we are really, really grateful to have those teams go out with the Roots teams and provide medical services to folks who are living outside. We also have a shelter case conference where our teams have been able to advocate for our clients and get folks into those beds from all over the city. We also have a downtown case conference, which includes county personnel and resources, Resolve Crisis Service, and psychiatrists from street medicine. This has been incredible to really help solve the most complex cases in downtown. We have weekly case conferences with Second Avenue staff, daily shift change with Resolve to ensure that when we're finished with our daylight shift, that Resolve, who covers more of a PM shift, can ensure that they have all the information and can look out for folks. We also have the Lead Policy Coordinating Group that includes people from the District Attorney's Office, the Pittsburgh Bureau of Police Leadership, Public Defenders, Allegheny County Department of Human Services, city council staff, City of Pittsburgh Department of Public Safety. It's a really holistic approach to really breaking down those barriers into the criminal legal system. Fundamental to our work is our partnership with FIRE and EMS. Both our post overdose support teams and our PINS teams and our Roots team have unit days with EMS so that we can not only learn from them, but share expertise and support their work. And the crisis response teams can now also respond to scenes as requested by FIRE and EMS. Preponderant number of calls with police and the new model really enables us a collaboration with a larger number of officers. In these past four weeks, we've worked with more officers than we have in the past, so we're really excited to be working with more folks because that allows us to have more of a positive impact on communities. We engage in inter-agency collaboration. There's a lot of cases that we've gotten from all of you regarding some houses that are in very bad conditions or hoarding situations. So we're currently working with PLI for condemned housing and hoarding situations, with the Department of Public Works for cleanup of spaces by the unhoused population, also the Departments of Parks and Recs with trauma support and community engagement. And we also receive referrals from city council to provide assistance for vulnerable residents, as well as the mayor's office, and support constituents who are experiencing mental health and behavioral health crisis. Other accomplishments, we've piloted an initiative to provide a crime scene cleanup to support families impacted by homicide or suicide, reducing trauma to...reducing trauma exposure and aiding in recovery. So a lot of folks, obviously, don't have renters insurance, and a lot of times when there's a death by suicide or gun violence, we are able to get in there and clean it up for them, reduce the trauma. This has been something that's been pioneered in other cities and has really interrupted that cycle of violence, and we're really proud. We've done, I think, a couple this year, so we're very proud of that. We had a Roots-led effort to address public hazards, including propane tanks, abandoned encampment sites, and syringe waste in collaboration with post EPW and Allegheny Cleanways, resulting in the removal of thousands of pounds of waste from the city streets. Additionally, our post team has been doing cleanups in different neighborhoods to ensure that sharps are safely disposed and they don't pose a public health threat to the community. We have maintained weekly after-school drop-in hours at Phillips and Ammons Recreation Centers, which provide a safe space and consistent support for at-risk youth, fostering positive relationships and reducing risk behaviors. We receive a lot of support from the REACH team and from our partners in community violence and services. We responded to three large-scale incidents, the East Hills Fire, the Squirrel Hill Fire, and the Garfield Shooting, to provide trauma support to the community when that happened, but also long-term. In the East Hills, we were able to get folks into their new places. We got furniture donated, and we got them connected to therapy and some mental health services. In both...in all three, we provided in-the-moment trauma, but we also provided intense case management following up. And then we've developed a community resilience program, which we'll be launching in 2026, and we're currently hiring for that team to improve advocacy training and relationship building with community members. Our diversion program, the National Lead Support Bureau, recommendation for BIPOC participant percentages is 66% and above, and usually these take approximately three years to accomplish. Our program hit 66.7% this week. It took us a year and a half. So we want to ensure that we are supporting folks that are experienced criminalization and systematic racism. We have three crisis response intervention cross trainings with the Pittsburgh Bureau of Police and OCHS clinicians, which empower both teams to share experiences but also learn from each other. The Office of Community Health and Safety is working currently with the Lead Support Bureau. We've been selected to be an adjunct site, which means that they're going to fund us to provide our expertise to other cities across the country. So they will be paying, like, funding us to give our expertise. So I know that there's an interest in the team in Kansas to come learn from Pittsburgh, so that really ensures sustainability for that program. We're only...there's only two adjunct sites, and we are one of those. And this, I just want to...
Sure. If I can just jump in for a minute here, just for...
Just for reference, we've included the budget pages. These are identical to the ones that were in the preliminary budget. They're mostly just here for reference and for those that are watching online, I'm just going to flip through these quickly to give Camila a little bit of a break from her.
Thank you.
And since that refers to both the operating budget and we have the Stop the Violence Trust Fund listed here as well, that's a, probably a broader discussion than is really in the scope of this, but since so much of OCHS is supported by it, it felt that, we felt it was important to include here for reference as well. And now I'll turn it back over to Camila.
I just wanted to share a picture of our staff so we could see how diverse they are in their skill sets as well. We have social workers, peers. We were the first city entity to hire peers to the city government. We have community health workers. We have outreach workers, case managers. So it's really a diverse team, which our goal is always to provide a holistic approach to care.
All right, and that concludes this portion of the slide presentations. Open it up for any additional questions.
Thank you, and thank you Director for a well-informed presentation. Seems like you've expanded your responsibilities and I know I'm partially responsible for that in some ways, but we'll talk about that when I, when we get around to me, but, but I do want to say that we are joined by our Council President, Daniel Lavelle, our Finance Chair, Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, Councilwoman Kahari Mosley, Councilwoman Bobby Charlin, Councilwoman Deborah Gross, and I do believe Councilman Bobby Wilson is online. So we almost have a full slate here. So, so with that, I want to ask my colleagues, does anybody have any time restraints or issues where we could jump to somebody if you have to go somewhere? Okay, great. So I will open it up to Council for questions and we'll start at the end of the table with Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I really appreciate how in-depth and complete and detailed this report is and that it matched exactly what was on the screen with what we had on paper. So just those nuts and bolts is, is really appreciated. I think in the last week or so, since we've gotten the mayor's budget and we've had some briefings here at the table and there's been some media that I've been confused. And so I want to ask you, because I think I saw in the newspaper that it was something like there was intended to be fifteen social workers, but now there's only six. And yet I see that the employees over time has gone from twelve in 2022 up to forty-one in 2025. Clearly you're doing a lot of the work, right? With the, you know, we, you know, we've helped, all of us, especially, I'm really appreciative of the work that OCHS has done, like saving lives in my districts, especially among the elderly and persons in need of service. So explain to me kind of where we're at with the number of social workers, but I think I've also been confused because we were told that like empty positions had been eliminated, but you just said that there are twenty-one empty positions in the twenty-six budget proposal? And so help me understand where you're at in capacity, what has been budgeted and.
Twenty-one of those include grants, so those can't be.
They're not actually.
They can't be cut or, yeah, so we're hiring for, for that process. With the social workers, we currently have four clinicians hired and we have currently two positions that we're hiring for, but we did have fifteen. I, I think because we weren't able to hire for those folks, that's when I think that budget, for budget needs, you always look at empty positions versus positions that are filled. So our idea to pivot was to be able to still provide crisis response with the limited clinicians that we had, as well as following national best practice. So we were able on Thursday to repost the position to clarify that two clinicians will be in the car. In those, since last Thursday, we've received seven applications and four hundred views. In the previous model, we were three months without getting a single application. And it throughout the year, we were only able to hire one clinician because obviously we require a certain amount of licensing and degrees. And when we talked to different academic institutions, they were telling us that they were having similar issues and we were, we were seeing folks who would fill that position apply to other positions in our office. So we did a lot of investigation and, and what we found is a lot of people who work in clin- clinicians, social workers in crisis don't, don't, don't want to be in a car with a police officer for eight hours. And so when we shifted, now we see this difference. Now we have seven applicants in, how many days? Four or five days? So we're pretty confident we can fill those two positions. I did see in the preliminary budget that we got eight positions back or no?
So there's, the preliminary budget that was originally submitted in September showed six, the social work team from fifteen down to six. Working with OMB and adjusting some other things across public safety, we were able to restore six of those positions. So now in the budget that was presented to Council last Monday, I guess it was, there are twelve now crisis clinicians.
I can't tell what those are from the page that we have in the handout or on the screen. I feel like I need to open my whole thing to see the more detailed.
Yeah, I think it is on page.
Position, I don't have my like page saved.
Page two seventy-eight of the budget.
Thank you.
Sorry, for brevity, we didn't include the position breakdown.
No, no, that's okay. This was a, it is a more detailed question again, because it's been on my mind and I've said some things publicly, but I think maybe I said them wrong and now I wanted to, this is why we have these budget hearings, I wanted to clarify what it was.
There are also, these are in the Stop the Violence Trust Fund, so it's not straight out of the general fund like most other positions. I think that's mostly what you were referencing. So these, it is general fund money, but it's then transferred in Stop the Violence and then paid for out of there.
I don't think that is it. I think that it was that we were, I was confused about like kind of which parts of OCHS were reported, again, in the media is being cut and how many we have. You know, we'd been thinking we had fifteen clinicians or social workers. So I guess I understand, I'm understanding now that we did have those and it's that we had turnover and nobody was applying for the positions and that's why you've restructured it.
So yeah, so we actually have, I think we've, from the beginning ones that we hired for the previous model, no one has left. It's more of that we weren't able to hire for the added positions that we got from Council. So exactly what you said, that we weren't able to fill those positions in over a year.
That, yeah, that's remarkable. That's remarkable. So it is, it's positive because I, I've said it before, I mean, I think my constituents are super supportive of the work that you're doing, right? And you know, maybe they haven't all seen actively all the aspects that you're doing and maybe some of the aspects affects certain neighborhoods more than others, but I got calls when the media story a month ago made it sound like a program was being cut from OCHS. You know, I got calls of concern, like please find out, please tell them this is such a, it's so important and we're so supportive of this work and please find out what it's about. So I'm glad to hear that we haven't actually cut the output. I'm also really impressed at how much you've gotten that was grant funding. So again, it's not able to be cut as I think is the way you just framed it, right? And so that's a significant amount of funds that you and your team have applied for and then received.
Yeah, we're currently waiting. We've applied for an RFP from the county. I know that's been one of the ask from Council to make sure that we get, you know, funding from the county. So we are waiting on an RFP, we applied to it, which would be a really encompassing public health initiative. But also what we found in a lot of your districts is the need for a hoarding task force. So we currently applied for a grant that would allow us to have a hoarding task force and we have the full support of the county. They wrote a letter of support. So we're, we're really trying to expand our operations without being a burden on, on, on the city residents and the budget.
Thank you for that. As we know, we're very often, not always, but very often those are seniors who are just struggling to age in place and who may be in dire need of services and aren't receiving them and aren't connected to the service network. And it has an impact on the entire neighborhood very often. So, and then I'm also impressed that you somehow built a fleet of thirteen vehicles without a dollar of city money. Okay, just wanted to double check on that. You built a fleet of thirteen vehicles without a dollar of city money?
Yes, it's mainly has come from our grants that we've been really focused on finding grants that will support also that type of operation. And then we had two multiple vehicles that were given to us and a van that was donated by IMP, so.
And then above that, so grants received that are supporting the personnel, building a fleet of thirteen vehicles without a dollar of city money through grants and other donations. And then thirdly, reorganizing operations so that it would be reimbursable from the federal or state governments. And so again, what we're currently spending money on maybe become reimbursable.
Yes, we are, we have done already, we've trained, I think, three of our teams and what that would look like so we can go into billing. And we've been really studying what, not only the federal, but the state level is doing so that we can start billing for those, for that funding that is currently getting paid by, you know, city budget.
That's, that's really impressive. I appreciate that. I think those are all my questions, Mr. Chair. So I'm just going to give the floor back. Thank you. Appreciate your work, Director.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gross. Councilman Charlin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks for being here. Everyone from, from Public Safety. I, I do, I, I've got a lot of questions for OCHS as I often do. So bear with, I might actually break it up so that other people can go between me. So let me know if any of you guys are getting antsy over here. Wanted to start off, you mentioned at first in your answer that co-response or your, your new crisis response model, that some of those folks don't want to be with an officer for eight hours. Why, why is that?
So I mentioned that when we were hiring. That's why we were not getting those positions filled. We started talking to the folks that we were interviewing who had the license and the educational background to be in that co-response position, but we're applying for like case manage, even positions that are lower paid. And so because of the type of training, the ethics, they have to, it's just a completely different field of work and they wanted to have more independence. Those are the people that were trying to fill the position, didn't want to be stuck in a car for eight hours with an officer.
They'd be in, okay.
Like people who were applying, that we couldn't get to apply for the position, that were applying for other positions in our office that were paid less, but they had the qualifications to be in that type of position.
They just don't like being with officers, that was going on?
Yeah, because I think the way they're trained in school differs from how police train. I think they have, both have very different functions and I think that sometimes those conflict, those different like governing roles conflict with each other. That's something that we also talked with like Harvard, Yale, Pitt about their mobile crisis also shifting from two clinicians and no public safety from their own departments was the similar conversations we had is that independence and mobility because of different. So social workers and clinicians and therapists have a very specific rule of ethics, especially if you're licensed, there are certain things that you can and can't do, so.
Okay, yeah, I, I just, I would like our social workers to, that are going out to work with officers to be comfortable working with officers.
They are, they are very comf-, that's why we still partner with them. So now we work with actually more officers than we used to before, but having that independence and mobility to say, the officer cleared the scene for safety, they have a conversation about what's going to happen and then the officers can leave and continue to do their like public safety role. And then we can stay for like, sometimes we stay for four hours with that person. And so that was not a really good use of resources to have that. And we currently also have case conferencing, so that way officers know what's happening with the folks they refer to us. So they're very comfortable. It's just that mobility of having to be in the same vehicle because then you're like, you either have to go, for example, if you're an officer, you have to go to a traffic stop, right? And so the social worker's just sitting there. Or you have to do some, check in on homeless folks and telling, for example, to like move out of like storefronts, the social worker stays in the car because that violates kind of their code of conduct and ethics. So that's kind of what we were seeing with having them stuck together in a car.
Okay. So I do, shoot. Before we get there, I know today that we had an incident in Zone Three. We did ask for the, for the co-response team to come to Zone Three. Your response was that the folks that are working there cannot leave Zones One and Two. Where, when do we think that we'll get to a point where we can treat South of the River like the rest of the city?
Yeah, so we currently, because we don't, the city doesn't own the dispatch, is the county, the dispatch, we currently only have coverage in One, Two, Four and Five. But Chief Vanansky and Commander Abraham reached out to me to mention the need that we know is in Zone Three. We just don't have the people in those positions. So what we're going to do right now is that Commander Abraham can call for either unit so that they can respond. So we are going to make sure that we can respond.
Didn't that happen today?
Well, we're going to meet on Thursday. We have to first like talk about like if there's capacity, talk to our team, make sure they're prepared. So we have a meeting on Thursday to talk about how we can do that without dispatch because we can't add a zone to dispatch until we have those two clinicians hired. So we actually asked HR to send those seven applications and we're meeting to discuss those because we would like to have the team for Three and Six to be hired as soon as possible. But before with the current model, we had no applicants for three months. So it, it would be irresponsible to burden our current force staff to respond through the whole city without even having liability or having an incident. But I know that the program manager who's dispatching is behind. We can definitely check on what the call was because we're going to launch it this Thursday to ensure that if you need us, we can deploy either unit because we know the need.
Yeah, I, it's something that I've been asking for, for the whole time I've been here, well before I took office. Again, that exists in other zones, you know, so I'm looking at the, your calls for service by zone. Zone, you mentioned that Zone Four has the highest call and.
The second.
Yeah, but Zone Three is, has more calls. So I, I don't understand like why, why again, why Zone Three is, is being ignored.
Well, in the previous model, we have to have an officer designated to the zone before we expanded and we didn't have capacity to expand either with the officers or with social workers. That's the only reason. And because of your, because of that need in Three and Six is why we pivoted to make sure that we can have now coverage of all the zones with less social workers.
Okay, but I still don't understand why, why Zone, other zones would come before Zone Three, which has more calls.
When we did our data analytics, the zones that had the highest call for crisis were downtown, the north side, and then Zone Five. And that's why we piloted that program in those three zones. When we found that there was a high volume of calls in Four and Three is when we came last year and asked for more social workers. We got those social workers. Unfortunately, we were not able to get any applicants, so we didn't have people to send. But because of that need is why we're going to make sure that our teams can respond to Three as we wait to hire folks. I, I wish we had all the social workers to expand, but we didn't get any applications.
Okay. Yeah, I, I just said it last year, said it, said it, I'm going to say it again this year, said before I was here, like it is, it is not okay for Zone Three to continue being ignored. it is, it is not okay for Zone Three to continue being ignored. Speaking of, of Zone Three, I want to talk about the Roots expansion. So there's a team lead, has been pretty active, coming to community meetings and things like that. Tell me about the team that's under him.
Yeah, so we currently offered a job, so they are gonna have a start date in the first week of December for a community health worker.
So nobody's under him?
It's currently just a team lead. We're hiring for that team. And we offered.
In Zone Three again, that's.
Yes.
Okay, we're, we just have a team leader, but no team?
Yes, we've been, the positions have been up and we've been, as you saw our data, we've been going through an extensive amount of screens and interviews, and we haven't found candidates for those positions.
Is it based on zone that we just can't find someone for my zone?
It's based.
Are we able to hire in the zone in the West End?
Oh, yeah, so we've.
So other zones, yeah.
Yeah, so, so we're like hiring for your zones, but that's the only roots that we've been doing hiring for this past year is to ensure that we can support that team. So like I said, we have a community health worker that's gonna start. And then we just finished doing interviews for senior outreach specialists. A lot of the folks that apply for those positions because they're low barriers, once again, it's not that it's your zone, it's the fact that we don't have folks applying for those jobs. And I want to be very meticulous to hire the best people because there's other outreach out there that have different standards than what the city standard is. So it's, it's a priority. I mean, the people who have been doing those screens, it's not even part of their job description and they do screens, first interviews, second interviews, to ensure that we can get that team hired. It's not zone-specific, it's just the candidates. I think one of the things we've experienced because we've interviewed folks is at the end of the day, the city residency. We get to almost that last step and, you know, people who work those positions, those positions, the way they're paid, can't afford to live in the city. So that is a huge barrier for us.
Sure, yeah, it's something we, that, that barrier we hear all the time. But tell me this, are, when someone applies for the job, are they picking which zone they want to work in?
We have, during our second round interview, we say which zones are available, and we ask if people have a preference. But we make the decision based on, we always say we have to prioritize zones that don't have a lot of members actively. So a lot of people prefer to go downtown and Zone One. But we currently, in our process, are only saying that we have Zone Three available.
What's, what makes Zone One or Downtown more preferable for an applicant?
I, I don't know. I think a lot of it has that there's such a concentration of services here. So there's more things. I know you, you're getting more and more services in your area, but the fact that you have a big shelter, different types of housing, SROs, you have the Red Door, you have different CHS in the North Side, you just have such a concentration of areas. So what we've done is the team lead that you've talked about, he, we want to make sure that folks also are familiar with the zone. So for example, the people who are going to that team have either worked in the zone in previous jobs or live in the zone to make sure that they're supporting operations.
I mean, at this point, someone would be better than, than no one. It's been, been years.
Yeah, we, I think we got it last year, yeah. So last year, we've been.
No, no, that, we, go ahead.
We've been really prioritizing Zone Three. So in our questions, we just mentioned the fact that this is the only team available currently.
Okay, so mentioning that, how long we've been talking about the Roots expansion. Did we ever find out where that ten million dollars went, the ten million from ARPA that was allocated to you in 2021?
I was not here in 2021, but yeah, you can talk more about that right then.
Yeah, so the ARPA dollars are still set aside. They were encumbered in the HN contract, which expired earlier this year. We have still been using that to fund the Roots program. You would have to ask OMB exactly what, where that money sits in the city coffers, but it's not gone. It's still identified to support the Roots program. My understanding is, is once some of that was moved into the general fund and some of it will eventually be moved into Stop the Violence Trust Fund to continue the Roots program work. And that operational expenses, leases, et cetera, have still been, we've transferred the leases now over to the city, but you know, prior to all that occurring, most of those, that funding was being spent out of that, that fund to pay for the leases of the facilities in downtown East End and North Side. As well as staffing, when HN was staffing and then as we transitioned it to the city teams, it use, that is utilized to pay for the staffing of the Roots teams, including the expansion into Zone Three.
I, in 2021, that money was allocated, or was, yeah, was allocated for the expansion into Zone Three.
Correct, it was allocated to HN.
Right, to expand.
At that time, the plan was HN would start to expand through the whole city, but then shortly into it, we realized the capacity and the ability for HN to do that just wasn't as practical as bringing it in-house. So we brought it in-house. That obviously caused some delays and struggles. And then staffing, I mean, I think any director will tell you, staffing, especially of positions that pay fifty thousand or less, is extremely difficult because of the residency requirement and the ability for people, unless they're partnered up or, you know, have roommates. You, you're not going to afford much in the city. There's no, I mean, I think you've talked about it, right? The affordability of housing for folks in that, that pay range, it's difficult. It's also very difficult work. It's not, you know, the, the Roots team goes out. We've had some folks that start and then shortly after they start, they realize it's, it's way more intensive than they thought. You know, walking into encampments, having to walk sometimes a couple miles into an encampment, depending on where they're at and located. So it, it's not easy work. And then we asked them to do it for less than fifty thousand dollars a year as an outreach person. So I think those are things we have to continue to evaluate as to why, you know, similar to what we did with the crisis response and the social workers, like why are we not getting applications? Why are we getting so much rotation, turnover? And, and some of it is, I think Assistant Director Alakon mentioned, like there's, there's other groups, you know, Bridge to Mountains and other folks that are contracted with the county that have I don't know, I guess, different philosophies than we do. Sometimes folks would find that more attractive than what we have to do. We're, we're still very accountable to the public, so we have to find that balance. And it's a little more difficult than when you're a private nonprofit that doesn't really have to engage with the community as much as we do.
I mean, which begs the question, like, is this work that, you know, well, I, I guess actually, what you kind of explained is why it's beneficial to have a partner like HN that can do the hiring, that folks can be outside the city instead of being inside the city. I know that was a decision that was made years ago, but you know, I, I still don't quite understand why that decision was made. But that would be an advantage of having a contractor like that. In the same way, currently, you know, if, instead of having the, the Roots team here, if we say like, you know, we're not, we're just not able to, to staff Zone Three, why can't we just contract Bridge or, you know, what are the other groups to come work in our zone and folks there can live in Baldwin?
Yeah, I think that's something to consider and explore and maybe a hybrid version of it, that we oversee those teams a little more than, you know, if they're autonomous, just by a contractor. I think those are things to consider. Like I said, I mean, there are some outreach teams that are completely against decommissioning or moving people along or, you know.
Or working with police.
Encouraging them into housing or, yeah, or engaging with our police officers. So we, we have to balance what we can manage and control with what an organization that we work with is willing to do or that we contract is willing to do. Even from the HN side, I, I think there, I don't, I wasn't involved in that RFP, so I don't know who else was selected, but that wasn't something HN really did before. They had their street medicine team, but they didn't have, you know, the homeless outreach as much as like Mercy did and others. So I think it was a newer thing for them and it just wasn't quite as successful as we were all hoping it would be. Mostly around how some of the response worked and how some of the pressure worked from those hubs. I mean, I, I think, I know Councilman Wilson's on, but he can tell you where, even to this day, we, we do receive a lot of pressure from the Roots hub, people around there because of the activity that tends to occur and, and develop in HN. At the time, I think it was getting a lot of pressure, so they decided it would, you know, antiquately, we all kind of said, okay, let's bring it in-house and see where we can bring it to here. But with all these programs, they're very new, it's, it's a lot of newer things that cities didn't provide in the past. It's things that the counties still tries to provide, but I think we've seen a lot of benefits there. And I know I've talked to the, you know, DHS Director Dalton, who I think she'll be here in a couple of weeks with us, about some of that, that, you know, maybe as we continue to develop these programs, we have to be honest as to who has which strengths and what makes the most sense to be the most effective with the dollars that we all have, which is limited on all fronts at times, you know.
No, I appreciate that. How about, so what is the current policy when we've got unauthorized occupants in abandoned buildings?
So we, as OCHS, can't do any like enforcement or any, that comes from public safety. We don't have any legal recourse. So what we've done is created like an abandoned building task force. We're working with PLI as well and.
Is that in Zone Three?
Yes, we've actually been to several houses.
Who is the contact to talk to?
That would be Ben Talik. He's been receiving a lot of those referrals, but also we've just did huge amount of analysis and assessment in Carrick. We were able to get some folks into housing as well as in other areas of Zone Three. We saw that a lot of the push to decommission the South Side Trails pushed a lot of folks into these abandoned buildings. And so because it's dangerous, right? A lot of those times, those houses are in really horrible conditions. So we can't risk our folks to go in there. Sometimes they're doing like criminal illegal activities, so we need support from police. So they've been going out, I think it's a team of three or four, have been going out to abandoned houses. We have abandoned houses in Zone Five. It's incredibly high the volume of, of folks who are in abandoned houses. So we're definitely gonna need a lot of support, which we're currently working with PLI, DPW, police. This is definitely not an OCHS responsibility, but we want to be there to provide resources and housing so we can be part of that equation, right? Of helping those folks, but we can't tell folks to leave abandoned buildings. We can't remove them. That would have to come from public safety or even like the courts. But we are, we are going to, I think that we have the most requests from Zone Three and Zone Five currently.
Yeah, I, I mean, we spent probably a full year on the Wyndham Street properties. And the police were saying, please let us come in, please let us come in. And there was hold up somewhere, you know, I'm not sure exactly where in your department that came from, but the neighbors around were very worried that as the weather was cold at that point, when we were talking about this before, that, you know, that's where a fire starts. And yeah, we, I mean, I have not seen a whole lot of success there and would like to see that greatly improved. Another question that I have is when you talked about the help that you do after a violent incident, is that also not in Zone Three?
Well, we haven't gotten any large, massive incidents referred. We can only go where we're referred to.
What would constitute?
So for example, I mentioned the three that I mentioned was the Garfield shooting, the East Hills Fire, and the Squirrel Hill Fire. We are at Carrick, so during that, Zone Three also includes Carrick. We, we immediately went when the incident at the school happened. So those things have to come referred to us. And we were there, we created like a response after in the school, but then we also created a mental health fair where we invited the entire of Zone Three to come and receive those services. So we have been in, in the area.
How does, how does a referral like that work?
Usually what happens is either if it's a fire, fire will refer it to us. And in these violent.
A gun incident, how does that refer?
The detectives refer that. So detectives, we will never be there on the scene. We have to wait for referrals. So those will either come from like detectives, detectives of homicide. We also get some from ICE, or they will come from our partners who work in violence prevention because that's really, violence prevention, we do it, but it's not our role, so we'll get those referrals. So it has to come from someone in public safety for us to be deployed. But that is a citywide, that we go everywhere. That program is citywide.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm thinking of a specific incident I don't want to talk about here, but we completely let this family, completely let them down. So, you know, again, I, I would like to learn a little bit more about how that's supposed to work. And I can tell you how it did. So with that, I can, I think I've gone on a little bit long here, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Charlene. And thank you, Director, for reminding the councilman that Carrick is in Zone Three as well, you know. Councilman Kari Mosley, floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I thank you all for, for being here today. First, you know, I want to thank Public Safety and OCHS for being great partners with my office and all the work we're doing in Zone Five. And also being willing to be a part of the working group that we put together to address you know, really the intersection of the various challenges that we have in Homewood that are a result of progress that we made in other parts of the city, as you say, as we make progress in one area. We kind of push a problem to other areas, which creates the need to do more work. So I'm looking forward to seeing in 2026 what our working group, the challenges that they, we can solve to, together. I just have, you know, a few questions, because I'm, you know, we, we probably see each other at least once a week, either out in the community, you know, or, or in, in various meetings. I don't have a lot, but I just have a few questions about, you know, you know, the, the presentation, you know, particularly around, you know, I'm really interested in, you know, the abandoned buildings, like on our, on our call that we had last week, you know, working group, you know, of, of bringing together DPW, PLI, and FIRE. And, you know, I would just like to hear a little bit more about how you work with FIRE, because I know Chief Jones is really, you know, concerned, I'm sure, citywide, but you know, obviously the incident of fires and abandoned buildings that happened, you know, in Zone Five and, and District Nine. Can you talk just a little bit, you know, more about that specific work, you know, around the abandoned buildings?
Yeah, so a couple of years ago, I think it was like three years ago, we started first just working with PLI on, because they were the first on the scene, right? They go there, they condemn it, they board it. And they would find folks there, so they would refer them to us. And so the Roots team would go, or sometimes the PINS would go, the PINS team to, sometimes it was our older adult population, especially in Zone Five. It's a lot of folks who, who have become unstablely housed. So what we saw is with a lot of these decommissions, a ton of folks started going into abandoned buildings. And that has been something that's occurred even before the decommissions, but we just saw it at a, at a higher, at a higher rate. So what we wanted to do as OCHS is provide support for the folks. We don't have any type of code enforcement, we don't have a policy because we don't have any enforcement, enforcement capabilities. But what we did, which I think is very helpful in the work group, is that you have a great list that we didn't have, right? And so working together collaboratively is gonna be the best to provide those outcomes. So that list that you provide us, we then take it to PLI because we have a case conference with them. We work really well with them and say, has there been anything legally or in the courts that has been done? And that way, they have a little bit more information and we also need to ensure the safety of our folks. So we will then reach out to our police partners and be like, can we go together? We've done that in the past because there might be some drug use or some aggressive behavior. And so we really want to make sure that there is like a task force to really address that because OCHS can't really do that on its own because it, it's not in our kind of scope of work, except providing folks those supports. So I know that, I think Ben is behind me. Ben, would you mind coming to, can, can he come to the table to talk about the team he's been putting together?
Absolutely. Just introduce yourself, Ben, for the record, okay?
Hi, everybody. My name is Ben Talik. I'm the program manager for Roots. You just want me to jump right into it?
Yeah, just talk about the new group that you've been, and what you do and the houses and.
Yeah, so this is, this is pretty new. We got together, so like, Camille. Yeah, so this is, this is pretty new. Um, we got together, so like Camila said, we, we actually started with a group of four. There's about eight total people who are involved with it. Uh, as you guys probably already know, going into abandoned houses is unsafe for. Quite a few reasons. We have no idea who's on the other side of those doors when we go in. We have no idea the condition of the building. Um, so we first started meeting with PLI about this. Uh, they let us know that they have some sort of rating system that has helped us get a. Little bit of a picture of what we're to expect in terms of structural integrity of the building. Um, this team consists of members from Roots, uh, members from the post team, as well as members from the uh. Uh, Allegheny Link Field Unit and a member from the street medicine. She's a nurse practitioner. Uh, we did our first outing. Um, we actually did eleven houses in one afternoon that were actually entirely in zone three. Uh, we encountered, I think, four individuals during that that outing. One person is actually. Uh, in a house that's back end was fully removed, so we had to climb through to to locate them. Um, and every one of these instances, when we couldn't locate somebody, we talked to the neighbors in the, in the area to see if they had seen anybody in the. In the vicinity in recent weeks, months. Uh, the majority of these referrals are coming through either PLI. Uh, residents through um, three one one, and we've gotten maybe one or two from police as well. Uh, but I'd say the vast majority are through three one one.
So I think the list is gonna help a lot.
Sure.
Yeah.
Sure, and as, you know, obviously, you know, we meet monthly, so.
Yes.
You know, we'll be able to continue to share that information and, you know, in in real time, and and once the weather breaks, I'm sure we'll do another uh, walk.
Yes.
You know, the community, which I thought was, you know, very fruitful.
It was.
It's actually being able to put together, um, you know, a- as a large group, walking through the community, seeing the abandoned buildings, seeing the activity. Um, uh, my next question was about the after-school dropping hours at Phillips and Ammons. Is is there any um. Um, effort at this point to to expand that? Is is that exclusively at at city recreation centers?
Yes, so we found that that was the best place where we're at risk youth was uh, was able to go. In these, um, it was in open public spaces, no one's gonna, you know, tell them they can't go there. So we actually piloted them those in Carrick and in Ammons where we saw a high need, but also were. We, everything that we have to do has to have a partnership, so those rec centers and parks has been amazing. We would love to expand because of the need is why we're launching this community resilience program, because we're gonna have a team of five. So that there's, because right now it's just our amazing trauma specialist, Allison, um, so she goes in between those. Those two, but um, with more people, so I was able to swap some positions to prioritize this. We want to be in more. Of those community rec centers.
Yeah, and Allison, I mean, she's been great.
Fantastic.
Um, she was, you know, a rock star at East Hills, you know, with, between the fire and then the subsequent heating issues.
Oh, yeah.
Had about.
Yep, and we got furniture for folks and their new housing. She was incredible advocate.
Absolutely, um, so um, so my final question is about the the uh, the community resilience program, and I know you alluded to it. Um, in the presentation, can you talk a a little bit about more, what's that going to look like once it launches in twenty twenty six?
Yes, we want to have a more data-focused approach for community engagement, so make sure that we're getting all the information from the community. Of what they're seeing and what they need, so we are currently hiring for a community resilience program manager, a team lead. Will have a trauma specialist, a victims assistance case manager and a coordinator, so what we're doing is we're. We're bringing together community and engagement, training and advocacy with trauma, so as you know, the amazing work that Allison has done. Includes a lot of community engagement, because a lot of these incidents have a large effect on the community. So what that is gonna be is be able to do more of those mental health uh, de-escalation trainings, do more trainings to empower folks. Um, but also be able to empower leaders, so for example, community leaders to empower them, to bring them. Um, into the government conversation, so it's it's a community and trauma approach. Um, to engaging especially vulnerable populations, particularly like the black and brown communities that have been, you know, um, in a lot of. Uh, in a lot of times been um, not, you know, served, that's why it was a huge priority for me to go to zone five. Um, you know, after focusing a lot of downtown and the north side, because those communities have not received a lot of resources. In ever, so um, I I wanted to make sure that that community resilience team can go to, it's it's citywide, so we can go to. Every single zone. It will be in zone one, two, three, four, and five, six. We, you, they can be requested through city council. We can work with your community engagement folks, with your chief of staff. It's just to provide a, a more. Um, technical and data-focused, but trauma support as well.
Okay, and and this is actually my last question, I promise. Um, I did, I did just want to follow up and we can definitely talk about this, you know, offline. Actually, you know, a- a- as we speak, uh, my office is having our monthly meeting with the Homewood Collaborative and and then URA, so I'm interested. To to understand if you heard anything back about actually um, our ongoing collective effort to actually get an OCHS location. On Frankston Avenue in 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 Homewood, so I'm I'm looking forward um, to to hearing about that. It just jogged my memory. And and I know, I know Grace, uh, my chief of staff is meeting with the URA and the Homewood Collaborative in Homewood um, right now, and I know that's one of the agenda items. We're talking about.
I really appreciate it. We do need that support from all of you, so we have pivoted into modular spaces for the Roots team. Um, in order to be in spaces that are city-owned, so that we don't get, you know, evicted or that also it's more sustainable. These places, I think just for their supporting them is less than um, paying rent um, to a landlord. So we actually have engaged with a company, the city has a contract um, to order three. One for zone one, one for zone three, and one for zone five. So the spaces that we're looking are are like mainly URA, so I know there was conversations in zone three about Collar Park. Um, we talked about that specific, so any, any help that can be done, like to advocate, I really appreciate it.
Yeah, and I'll, and I'll be circling back with you to hear how our um, how our meeting went today, which is literally happening as our meeting is happening. Um, so so I'll stay at that, you've been again, thank you for your work, thank you for your ongoing partnership, and looking forward to what we'll accomplish together in twenty twenty six.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Mosley. Now, Councilwoman Strasburg?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't think I have too too many questions, just a few. One is, um, it's really, it's always great to hear your overview. Each year because um, there's so much happening, there's so much growth happening in the department, in the office. Um, that um, there's probably no one district or no one neighborhood that sees all of the different aspects of it. I know that anytime that I've reached out, you all have been incredibly helpful, responsive, helping to fill me in on, you know, what's already happening. Um, with our um, uh, unhoused populations, especially in Squirrel Hill, but other places, so um. I just, I appreciate it. I, one question, and then I want to, would jump to some of the the budget questions. I I know that councilperson Charland already asked about the the shift from co-response to the the newer approach. Um, one thing I know is that we have partners who I think are like grant partners, I'm guessing, to. Um, to one of the entities involved in this that sort of were caught off guard and said, oh, we just committed our own. Money towards co-response and now it's shifting. Is there, is there something that you can tell us has been, you know? Um, done to address that, like that money will still be used in this new program or? Has have those conversations already taken place with the partners that had already, you know, just committed to co-response and then the, there was a shift in approach?
Is that the state funding?
Uh, it was some sports teams.
Oh, that, yeah, the, the, I don't, so that money, the way it was gonna come through us, we don't even have it yet, is through the county. And we will continue to um, focus those funds into crisis, which is their priority crisis. Around zone one, zone two, they were very specific about that areas, and um, I am available to. Answer any questions if they have more questions, but we haven't gotten that funding yet. I think it's like a complicated process. Um, can you talk more about it, Director?
Yeah, so most of that, that funding filters through DHS.
Got it.
And then um, we'll receive some of it for Roots in um, crisis response and. Good majority of it is also going to downtown police over time for additional patrols in downtown.
Okay, got it. Um, I do apologize if you went over this before I got here. Um, I don't think you did, cause I was here for this. Can you just walk me through what accounts for this change from the operating budget twenty? Twenty-four to twenty twenty-five and then, uh, so, uh, just remind me, cause I think, I think we were briefed on this before. Before, but I, I'm just um, not remembering. The eight oh seven, oh nine six in twenty twenty-four, down to thirty-six thousand. And thirty-six thousand again. Um, in twenty-two, twenty-two, six, and it's the total expenditures from about eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand down to fifty-eight, fifty-eight. Um, in twenty-five, twenty-six. Maybe this is a question for, I mean, whoever can answer, but wh- wh- what's happening here? Remind me.
I don't remember if Director McDivie, I believe this, that money is, was for the HN contract.
Yeah.
That is no longer in the twenty-twenty-fives.
Okay.
Do you want more? So yeah, that was, it was housed in the operating budget out of the general fund. I believe it was shifted into the Stop the Violence Trust.
Trust Fund, okay, and that's what accounts for this increase from five million to eleven million in twenty twenty-six?
I believe so.
Okay. So there's, cause I don't see any new transfers. I see an increase from five million to eleven million in professional technical services from twenty-five to twenty-six and a. Shift from total expenditures from twelve million to seventeen million. So I, I was just trying to figure out, it's, it's just, it's a big change and I'm trying to figure out exactly where.
We might need to follow up with OMB about that, because that could also be a backlog of, I mean, we've discussed before, there's a balance. A very large balance in the Stop the Violence Trust Fund, so this might be just showing the anticipation of spending a lot of that down.
Okay, okay.
I could be wrong, though. We should definitely confirm with OMB.
Okay, we can, we can add that to the list of questions for them. Um, but yeah, I, 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 that makes sense. That's probably the answer, and I wanted to make sure I wasn't missing something else about like major shifts in. The way that we were accounting for this, whether it's, you know, general funded to trust fund, which is fine. I just want, I just want to know what the answer is, so, so that it's all clear in our minds as we're, as we're voting on this budget this year. Okay. Thank you, that's, that's it for me. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Strasburg. Uh, Mr. President?
Thank you. Just to, I guess, first speak to Councilwoman Strasburger's question about this shift from five to eleven. I don't believe that's the HN dollars. I believe that is reflective of the, the money, the two million that we're closing. Closing, there's contracts that the South of Violence Cones are settling on now, those fifty thousand dollar grants. That are also anticipated to be rolled over to next year. This is also reflective of the increase in spending for the anchor institutions. That are gonna be anywhere from two fifty to half a million dollars or so, so I believe it's, it's actually reflective of the spending down. To the outside organizations. Um, if we remember, the legislation calls for a minimum of fifty percent. Of the funding to actually go to outside organizations, not to be spent on government, and I think this is being reflective of that. But we should double check to your point.
Okay, thank you.
With that, I just want to get clarity in my own mind as relates to the vacant positions. So on one slide it mentioned that there were thirty-eight, then on another slide it mentioned that there were twenty-one. If I heard you correctly. The twenty-one vacant positions are grant-funded, correct?
So I think the, the, we currently have forty-one folks hired. And then we have twenty-one current vacancies. Twenty, those are grant-funded positions. That we haven't hired for yet. Um, those don't include the crisis response clinicians.
Okay, and what grants are covering the twenty-one positions?
So we have um, a SAMSA grant. If, if you look on the page, acquiring grants, we have. The LEAD grant, we have um, the SAMSA grant, we have the Department of Drug. And Alcohol Programs Grant, and we also have the Opioid Settlement Trust Fund.
Okay, thank you. Then what is the thirty-eight number? Where it says hiring two thousand twenty-five number, open positions, says thirty-eight. What is that covering?
So the thirty, we wanted to show um, what we've in this past two years, how much we've grown and all the positions. That we've gone neither from budget or from grants, so those positions, that thirty are the number of open positions. That we had, including budgeted positions in twenty twenty-four, we hired twenty-four out of those thirty.
Ah, okay.
And then this year, including grants, we have thirty-eight positions that we're currently hiring for. And this year, we've only been able to hire for eleven positions.
So that would leave twenty-seven currently open positions?
Yes, we didn't want to include the positions that are still not approved in this next budget.
Okay, so twenty-seventh is actual number for this year, currently.
Currently.
Okay, thank you. You had mentioned that Roots is being paid for by the ARPA dollars. Which all have to be expended down by the end of next year. What then will be the source to cover that funding?
That's, that's the ten million dollars, and this would be something you have to ask uh, CFO Cornell. My understanding is, is there's a way for us to shift the ARPA dollars to just operating dollars? I know, I know, I don't know enough about ARPA, but that'll be shifted that way somehow. That's my understanding, like those. We'll still have those dollars usable.
So we actually made ARPA a little bit more complicated than we needed to by showing targeted in our operating budget. This is what we're gonna spend with it. This is what we're gonna spend with it. If we would have just put it into like general fund support, then per the Department of Treasury, it's considered spend. So, once we put it in general fund support, then we allocate it, it's spent. When we use it, it, it doesn't, as soon as it's in general fund support. It's considered spent per the treasury.
Heard, okay, thank you. How much has, how much is the Roots program a year?
I have no idea.
So we submitted a budget up till twenty twenty-seven um, to OMB. Um, it differs yearly um, because of the increase in staff and operations, so we currently been funding. That like everything from the lifts, the um, leases, hiring, supplies. Everything comes from that fund, and we were asked by OMB to do a projection up till twenty twenty-seven. Um. I know my team has it.
How, you know, rough, rough estimate, you know how much we spent on Roots this year?
How much money have we spent on Roots this year?
Based on budgeted numbers, it looks, it's probably around one point seven.
Yep, one point seven a year, yeah.
Okay.
And that's why we want to shift to that billing model, because we want to make sure that post those ARPA dollars, that we can. Bill for those, um, especially for folks' salaries, um, but I know there's also conversations. Um, with the county for uh, funding.
Okay.
Yep.
I'm, I'm just trying to think through for our purposes, that we have a special line item. That is currently covering the cost of the Roots program. I'm not questioning the programming, just for the record. I think OCHS has good, great work. That that, that's gonna be spent down, so if we're spending approximately two million this year, maybe one point something last year. We're budgeting out till twenty-seven, we're anticipating growing the program. But at some point, we would then, the city, we, in our operating budget, would have to start absorbing three and a half million dollars. To do this, or, or thereabout, because we're growing the program, but we won't have a dedicated funding source for it. And so now we'd be put in a situation to try to think through where to get additional three and a half, four million dollars from. Especially as we're trying to grow it into district, well, zone three, excuse me, not necessarily district three, but zone three. So that's just top of mind as we're having a budget conversation. Um, okay, thank you.
And adding to that, can I add also, because that's been like a concern for us too, sustain. And adding to that, can I add also, because that's been like a concern for us too, sustainability for the roots program, so we've. We've actually talked about having four teams to cap that personnel spending and do what we're doing with crisis where. It's actually happening right now, zone five also takes on zone four, so zone three and six would be together, like, we're trying to make sure we flex to, to be as sustainable as we can.
Thank you, how much of. O C H is covered by the Stop the Violence Fund?
So the vast majority of that's going to be the forty-eight positions on page two seventy-eight of the preliminary budget, it's not in the slide deck, our apologies. And then, yeah, that, and as well as, oh, I'm sorry. As well as some of the other. The, I mean, as we mentioned, the AHN contract is currently sort of housed under that at the moment, but those are the biggest drivers of that, some other costs I think would be. Just gelato, gelato is not out of.
Gelato's out of the roots.
That's right, yeah, so.
This involves, it's three point two million dollars out of the Stop the Violence Trust Fund goes to O C H S.
Their funding out of the general fund is only fifty-eight thousand dollars total.
Right, so a third of the Stop the Violence Fund is going to O C H, and again, it's not questioning the value of O C H. But I am slightly concerned, when you were speaking with Councilman Charlotte, and you say that we don't do violence prevention work. But yet a third of violence prevention money is going to O C H, when in my opinion. We should be trying to figure out how the city is absorbing those costs, which is more appropriate. While also helping figuring out how to grow them to serve the various members' needs across the city. So that's somewhat troubling math, but.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think at one point the philosophy was, you know, some of this work, because it's around. Social determinancy, health, that sort of thing, so it, it is more upstream, but it does reduce, you know, violence in that way, but it's not the direct violence prevention work like reach in.
Right.
Violence prevention learning line.
Okay. I think that's all the questions I have for now, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President, and from what I understand, Councilwoman Wilson is still not with us, correct? Okay, so I, I really don't have a whole lot to add, my colleagues kind of. Hit most of those questions, go ahead, Councilwoman Gross, before I finish, if you had something to add.
If you wouldn't mind, the second round, just to follow up on Councilwoman Lavelle's questioning, a quick question to our budget director. That it sounds like you can't answer now, but I would like an answer for if that ten million dollars of ARPA funds that has to be fully expended by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Is funding some of these positions. If it's only roots, roots is not going to draw down the full ten million, because it's one point three. In personnel for twenty twenty-five and about one point seven budgeted for twenty twenty-six currently. So can you update us on, since we did line item it, unfortunately, it sounds like, for this work? We'll need an update on that, because it's too long, it's too late. Or is it too late?
So.
To reallocate it to the general fund?
You can, you can only reallocate to something that was already allocated in by the end of twenty twenty-four, so that was one thing, the general fund support was something.
That we should have done maybe twelve months ago.
We, uh, so we still can do that, because we had done it with some of the funding at the end of twenty twenty-four, so. Whatever is left by the end of this year, I, if, if we haven't done it by then, I assume that will be the move.
Well, can you update us now?
Yes, uh, dot right this second, but I can definitely look into it.
Right, right, that's what I mean, okay, that's all, that's, I thought, that was, that was a good line of questioning, so I want to make sure that we get the answers, thank you, Mr. Chair, that's all we got.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gross, again, I, I don't have a whole lot to add, but just a couple of quick questions. First of all, as Councilwoman Gross pointed out before, your grants have been very successful, who writes your grants?
Nick, works with me, Nick.
Nick, nice job, oh, he's from Brookline, I think, that's probably why, or Beachview, he's a Beachview guy, yeah, right.
Nick and Sophie, and then we want, the reason we've been very successful as well has been bringing in the program managers. So when I, to make sure that they give us their exact expertise to ensure that these folks trust that we're going to be able to execute the grant.
No, I, I think that's great, and from that color chart from your organizational chart, it looked like almost half were funded by grant money, so. That's wonderful, keep rolling in that money. All right, because that's, that doesn't cost our taxpayers anything, so that, they're the best type of funds, but, so, so I just wanted to compliment you on your, your grant writing and, you know. So the other thing was, you kind of shifted the organization just recently, I got a couple of. I got some feedback from some police officers that thought it was. Everything was fine the way it was, but you were switching some things, what changes did you make, like, what was the involvement of some of the police officers before? As to now? And what, what changes did you make, and it was all over the paper, but I, I didn't see a whole lot of change myself, but would.
It's a very simple change, the one thing we did was instead of having an officer in a car with a clinician, we have two clinicians in the car. And the officer just calls us in now to the scene.
So that was the big to-do, a couple of months ago, or whatever it was.
Yeah, like I said, like, we've been going to different state conferences, and when we talk about being sustainable and being able to. Bill, because a lot of the programs in other cities similar to us bill, to put less of a burden on like city budgets and taxpayer funding. What they're moving towards are these two clinician mobile crisis, in the current conference we went to, I think all but.
Two?
All but two in Pennsylvania do our model, so.
And, and did they require you to do that, to, to break it down that way for, in order to accept or be more eligible for grant money?
Especially for um, the crisis guidelines that are coming out of the state and the federal government. That's what we have to do to be able to bill, because clinicians, they know how to document specifically these types of engagements, so for example, like. The, they can audit us, right, and if we don't have the specific documentation, like how they like it, that's why we've been preemptively training our teams. We, we can be audited for like three million dollars, have to give it back, so. That's why the, these are moving, because a lot of the times, obviously, it was only one clinician doing that documentation of an engagement.
Great, now, on your type of calls, when you had mentioned earlier, and I've been on the other end of this personally, about suicide, homicide, and. You'll come in and clean up, I mean, you want to talk about trauma, first of all, whether it's a homicide or a suicide, it's traumatic for any of the family members or friends and relatives. I was shocked, because I was in the situation that it was like, oh, well, you have to go clean up, I guess, I just never thought of such a thing, right? So we actually provide that as a service?
Yes, we provide that now as a service, you all supported that last year, and we've actually, Katie, how many have we done?
Hi, so we contract with a company called Belfour, they submitted during R F P, they specifically specialize in biohazard cleanup, which means all of the. Fluids and things that the average person or cleaning company would not provide, typically, on average. A suicide or homicide cleanup in a contained area is about forty-five hundred, it can, it can exceed maybe five to six thousand, but we're averaging each. Individual cleanup, we've allotted a max of five thousand dollars to ensure that we can reach as many folks as possible. They would utilize their renters insurance or homeowners insurance first, and we would pay the difference, or if they don't have that, we would pay up to five thousand dollars, I think we've done two or three so far. But again, that depends on how quickly we're notified by homicide or violent crimes.
That's great, Katie, I, I, well, first of all, we don't seek to do that if we're called, and if we're needed, we do it, okay? And as, as Katie said, we contract that out, it is not our personnel.
It's not our personnel, and we had an incident where I think the cleanup turnaround was less than twenty-four hours, so that family could go back to their home.
Yeah, right, 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 no, it's incredibly sensitive time for the family, but they still have to live in the house, you know, so I, I, I feel that's. It's, it's wonderful, I, I think it's a great service to be able to provide. Speaking of biohazards, you know, we have spoken before about some areas that I have where syringes, thousands of them. Hundreds and thousands of them all over the place. I feel very strongly that your. Folks, your, your staff, nor any city staff. Should have to clean that up, I feel very strongly, we spoke about this offline. And I'll make it public, because I'm still trying to get a meeting with Aaron and the Prevention Point, one of the many, I don't know how many there are, but people that provide. You know, clean needles, which I supported, you know, if it prevents people from getting hepatitis and dying for it. What I'm not for is our Public Works employees or your employees going and cleaning it up, what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, so we have, I think, done over like five or six cleanups around the city, we are doing, I think, weekly cleanups in the Homewood area through our post. Our post team, I know the roots team has also done in zone three, we've done cleanups, we recently did one on Monday in, in the Liberty Tunnels. Which included my team having to excavate syringes out of the ground, thank you for supplying those shovels and rakes. And it, it's been quite a challenge to, to get those done, we included in three-one-one an option where folks could let us know where there were. Syringes so that our teams could deploy and help clean it up, as you know, a public safety hazard. So we, we've definitely stepped up to having to, to, to do those, those cleanups, and we'll continue to support you and any other city neighborhood thing.
And I'll continue to press Prevention Point and whomever else, you know. You know, supplies, syringes, that either they help us pay financially, or they do, I know where the spots are, you know, you know as well as I do, I know exactly where they're at. And I just don't think it's fair for our, and I know our Public Works employees are faced with it too, they do not appreciate it, they, you know, they have families they want to go home to, you know, one rung. Somebody falls and gets pricked by one of these needles, and you know, it could be them with hepatitis, so I don't feel we should be risking our health and our safety, so. I'll continue to work on that, how, other than Prevention Point, who else, how many organizations provide syringes?
So in the work we've been doing, we know that there's a lot of nonprofits that provide sharps as well, I think.
Sharps, is that what you call, okay, I'm saying syringe, sharps, okay.
Yeah, sharps are syringes, I know that there's a lot of them who are providing, I know that we have a syringe exchange program, so. It's paired up with a service, it's paired up with a case manager, with a peer. With testing, we always have either our EMS partners doing the testing, or we have made really great partnerships with clinics that do the testing, but. I would say there's, there's more than we can even know.
Is that right, so there's no regulations of any sorts, it's anybody who feels like they're doing the world good and preventing people from getting hepatitis can. Purchase or acquire points, did you say, points?
You can buy sharps or syringes, because you can buy them from like any medical provider.
I could hand them out tomorrow if I wanted to, is that right, well, I guess maybe it's not fair for me to just point out Prevention Point, I was under the assumption that there was, it was regulated, number one, I thought, and that. You kind of had to have permission, but I'm wrong.
Yeah, we do have the permission of City Council and the Board of Health, I think it's only us and Prevention Point, but like I said, there's a lot of nonprofits or. Some activists as well, and, and there's other organizations.
In that case, maybe I owe Prevention Point an apology, I, I, I thought they were one of like two or three that were. Again, I don't want to say licensed, but I, I thought it was regulated, that's, so it's, there's no regulations on that. So we have to clean it up, I guess, yeah, all right, all right, well, yeah, it's unfortunate, but anyway, so. It sounds like you do really great partnerships, you know, whether it's Second Avenue Common, you know, our police, you know, it seems like you. From, from just explaining things today, you have a really good outreach with all and every department or, you know. Entity that has to deal with what you do, so. I will tell you, you know, I, I feel like from the Stop the Violence Fund, I'm a big fan of roots, I've used them, I've, they've come to my town after. Homicides, and I've seen what they do, and I feel that they're very valuable, most of them, I don't know everything that they do, of course. But I will tell you this, O C H S, I feel, you know, I am so confident and so grateful that you answer calls for me, and you get action. And your staff, whether it's Katie or Nick or Ben or you name it, have been wonderful, and. Just the problem that I presented with you last week or two weeks ago, when we sat down and talked about it, I didn't know who to call, you know, there is no. Support line for that, but you just roll up your sleeves and you'll go anywhere and do anything, and it's all kind of related, you know, the health and safety, whether it's syringe or, or points or, you know, you name it. But, so I'm very impressed with the work that you've done, and I'm, I'm very impressed with your. Regards to you replying to me when I need help, okay, and just as you mentioned yesterday, you had a team out. Where I knew there was many, many syringes and buried in the ground and everything else, not only did they pick up what was on the surface, but they dug up because. For whatever reason, you know, to hide them, or I don't know what the reasons are, but users will put their points into the ground and kind of bury them, kind of hide them, I guess, so. So I'm, that, that means the world to me, even though the, the passerbyers don't see these, the particular spot that we were focused on yesterday. I know it's there, right, and I know the kid could be playing around there and end up throwing rocks, you know, doing whatever kids do, it could be in the middle of that, so. It's very comforting to me, the fact that, you know, we go and we do that. I did have a question regarding that, and I didn't want to ask you yesterday, because I was afraid it might stop you from going, this is like. P R T property, or, or, I'm not, I'm not, no, I'm PennDOT property, and I'm like, so are there no legal. You know, boundaries for you, you're allowed to go wherever you feel like there's a crisis or a threat to the health and safety of our constituents?
That's a great question, so we, as you mentioned, we have built amazing relationships with government agencies, community members, and nonprofits, so one of our valued partnerships is PennDOT, and we work there. We're the ones who got that meeting together for December, they've been great partners to allow us, and when they need to do bridge inspections, or when they need to do. Certain cleanups in their areas, they will call Ben and myself, and we're able to provide support for the folks that are there, move them, so that it's a very. It's not a traumatic incident, so they will, they, we have such a good partnership that we picked up not only syringes, but we picked up. Nine bags of trash there as well.
Oh, yeah.
And so because of the relationship we have with PennDOT, they were able to pick it up, and I know that in our meeting, we'll definitely come up with a sustainable solution, but. They, they really come for us, so like, I will say, we are never not wanting to go anywhere, but we need to. You know, people need to request us, ask us, because we're in so many places that it's hard to, you know, so they request us, we'll go.
I love the versatility you bring to the table, I do, my incident, I, I thought maybe you might just say, you know, it's really not under our purview, blah, blah, we're, you know, somewhere else doing other work, but. I, I love the, the fact that you responded to that in a timely manner, and I'm really looking forward to our meeting with PennDOT, we need to be partners with them, you know, as a matter of fact, when we cleaned it up, I actually cleaned it up. Originally, that, like you said, with panhandling, drug use, and underneath our bridges comes garbage, and. Oddly enough, you know, I put a garbage can there one day, and they use it, you know, so it's like anywhere in a business district, put a garbage can there and they'll, they'll use it, so. But that's what bothers me more than anything, I will say, besides the, the needles, is the garbage on my corners, and to me, PennDOT saw that we cleaned it up, now they saw you down there yesterday. And, you know, they want to partner with us, they were kind of looking for the city to take the lead, they didn't want to, they don't have the resources, they don't have the, the qualified. People like you have that go in there and be sensitive and talk to these folks and, you know, explain what we're doing there, so I think they just kind of. You know, turned a blind eye to it, but I think now that they're known that we're a partner, you know, most, a lot of it's. that they're known that we're a partner, um, you know, most, a lot of it's on their property, I will say, at least in my district, you know, so, so I'm really, uh, looking forward to that meeting. I think we can not only, you know, clean that area up or keep it clean, but beautify it, you know, so I think they'll be open to that. And I don't expect you to come and plant treburies or anything, you've got more important things to do. We'll call on the Pennsylvania Conservancy or somebody else to do that, but, um...
Well, if they need volunteers, there's a ton of gardeners in our staff.
Right, 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 so...
I also want to give a, just a...
You were Ben.
A quick shout out to PennDOT, they've actually reached out to us a ton, not for trash, but specifically for homelessness, whenever they have to do bridge inspections for where people are staying, they're really supportive in allowing us to come assist the inspectors so we're not disrupting the community as we work with them through housing, mental health, or whatever else it is that we're doing under there.
Right, Ben, and, you know, just in, uh, my conversations with the folks who, you know, inhabit these areas, uh, you know, I'm, I'm very open with them, I tell them who I am, and I ask them, can we do to help in housing, I'm not, not, certainly not a social worker like you have, but, you know, they're just listen, and, um, most of the time, they say, oh, I'm on a, I'm on a list to get housing, I'm on a list to get housing. I don't know if that's true or not, but I would love, at least in people and folks, and that same people typically I see them monthly, um, I would like to know if they are really on the housing list, you know? I know that a lot of them may have houses, you know, so, may not, I think they're trained, some of them are trained, just say, ah, I'm, I'm on, I'm on a list, I'm on a list, I'm waiting to get that call, but, but I would like to get a registry, if it's possible, of, you know, anybody and everybody that we can, and to see if they are actually on the housing list, and if they are and they're waiting, then great, that's, you know, we'll try to expedite it, but, but, but I, I, I kind of sometimes feel like they'll just give me a line, you know, like it's kind of what they trained, or, you know?
Yeah, I, I actually think that point kind of goes back to what, uh, Charlene was saying earlier about why aren't social workers willing to be, go around with police. I, I'm a big supporter of our police, but I also don't want to talk to somebody living outside with an officer, officer standing next to me.
Right.
We so often just see, you're going to get an answer just like that, it's what do you want to hear, because that's what I'm going to tell you. As soon as that officer goes away, we can actually have a really honest conversation.
Right. And not to mention, you know, you were wasting valuable time having, you know, social workers ride around with a police officer, and they were getting called to speeding or whatever, domestic abuse, but I see you, you respond to domestic violence?
Yes, uh, yes, a lot of them.
Only when it's deemed safe and the police officers are gone?
Yes, so officers will usually call us in, and it's mainly to support, um, family members, the victim, get them into our trauma supports, get them into, um, mental health services, so, yeah.
Yeah, between that, the, the, responding to suicide homicide incidents, um, evictions as well, is that right, you'll, you'll show up?
Yeah, those can be...
Just try to comfort people and help them get, you know?
Yes, those can be really traumatizing.
Housing or point them in the right direction, right?
Yes, so those can be really traumatizing, so we'll usually have someone from the crisis team there, but then the, the, the beauty of the office is they'll refer them to Roots. So, every, we have such specialized teams, like all of these accomplishments are because of all those folks that every day show up to provide care.
Right, right. Well, again, I'm very impressed, I'm very happy with what you do, you are the compassionate arm, I feel, of the city of Pittsburgh. I think you're all doing really good work, and, um, thank you. And that's, that's really it for me, so, um, with that, I know we have other business to get to. Thank you for being here, it was very informative, and thanks for all the great work that you do.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Uh, next, I'd like to invite those from Public Safety Administration to join us at the table, unless they're already all here, I'm not sure if there's somebody else, director, you want to bring to the table? But, um, while you're joining us, I'll ask our Budget Director, Peter McDevitt, to give a brief overview of the department.
Thank you, Councilman. The mission of the Department of Public Safety is to provide the security and safety of all residents and patrons of the city of Pittsburgh through the oversight and execution of the public safety operational strategies, through the planned and coordinated efforts of the bureaus of police, fire, emergency medical services, and animal care and control. This mission includes the creation of a command team with representatives from each of the bureaus acting in conjunction with the Office of Emergency Management. They strive to improve community and first responder safety through integrated response, training, technology, fleet upgrades, and increase community visibility, as well as enhancing and enforcing team collaboration across all public safety bureaus. They attempt to further their mission through the streamlining of administrative positions to provide cross-training support and improve oversight on resources, spending, and hiring practices. Uh, Public Safety Admin is divided into the following general service areas: administration, community outreach, nighttime economy, group violence intervention, Office of Emergency Management, the Office of Film and Event Management, public information media, public safety technology, special inter-bureau operations, and public safety facilities. Uh, summary of full-time positions, there is 136.12 positions, that .12 is due to a split with the Parks Rad Trust Fund for Park Rangers, um, that's an increase of 2.12 positions from last year. Uh, and a summary of non-personnel changes, if I can get there, there's a lot of pages here, um, overall, about a $70,000 increase in non-personnel changes, uh, for increased cost for camera systems and the increase in the training academy lease along with moving contract from other lines. Uh, in the capital budget, Public Safety doesn't have any specific projects for them, but there are DPW projects for, um, uh, public safety-related facilities, there's $250,000 for the Emergency Operations Center upgrades, um, Fire Station 20, Medic 12 construction, and the Public Safety Training Facility Master Plan, which was something that, uh, City Council approved earlier this year. And in the Stop the Violence Trust Fund, there's the Community Services and Violence Prevention Team, there's a total of 14 full-time positions, um, which is no change from last year in that trust fund. Uh, 96% of non-personnel funds in the trust fund are used for the CSVP programming, um, and there's a list of what that includes. Other trust funds, there's the Crossing Guard Special Events Trust Fund, the Emergency Management and Homeland Security Trust Fund, the, uh, YCPC Mayor's Youth Initiative Trust Fund, the Public Safety Support Trust Fund, and there is a list of fees in the fee schedule all listed out for you. Um, that's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. McDevitt. I don't, uh, think the Director or Charles have to introduce himself, it's already done, but Mr. Green, if you would please introduce yourself and tell us your position.
Good afternoon, David A. Jones, Assistant Director of Public Safety for the city. Mr. Green's my cousin, no problem.
Good afternoon, um, we do have a short PowerPoint for the Public Safety Admin as well. Um, so, within Public Safety Administration, um, obviously we provide administrative oversight to all the bureaus within Public Safety, so the Bureau of EMS, Bureau of Fire, Bureau of Police, and Bureau of Animal Care and Control. Under that, under my purview, we also have Assistant Director of Operations and Policy, who oversees general and overall, um, policy, both operational policy as well as, uh, you know, civil and code policies that we provide, the Office of Film and Event Management, and then Assistant Director of Community Affairs, Mr. Jones there, um, has the Office of Community Services and Violence Prevention, Park Rangers, uh, Disruptive Properties, responsible hospitality or nighttime economy is the more common name for it. Um, and then, of course, the Office of Community Health and Safety, and then the Public Information Office, um, Mr. Showers is our Finance and Administration Manager, our Office of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, our Technology Manager, and then our Fleet Facilities Manager, who is our main liaison with DPW to help ensure all of our facilities are as functional as possible with the budget constraints that we have. Um, we do have, as Mr. McDevitt stated, 136.12 positions, uh, the .12 is a partially funded position in the general fund, most of it is funded through, uh, rad and parks. So, we also have the School Crossing Guards Crime Analysis, um, in Public Safety as well as the budget, so just to go over a few highlights and accomplishments from all of our departments. Um, Office of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, we have expanded that over the past few years, um, to have additional planners, as well as a Deputy Emergency Management Coordinator, who led the efforts and response, Adam Amiel, who led the efforts and, um, the response and recovery to the High Wind event on April 29th, as well as they conduct site vulnerability assessments, this is something, um, a lot of folks don't realize, but it is something they do provide to churches, synagogues, public facilities, um, really to make assessments to help secure the buildings and, and help them get security and, uh, grant funding. Um, also, some policy changes, enhancing the barricade requirements for special events, um, we're trying to eliminate wooden barricades as sole protection, just because of, you can easily drive a vehicle through wooden barricades, so we're looking at some other options, which we've recently got a grant for. And then, of course, the upcoming NFL Draft in April of 2026. Um, Park Rangers, they have kind of a split response, so some of their function is within parks and some of it was in, within public safety, so we have to work very closely with that. Um, we've expanded the deer management program, successfully harvesting 335 deer in 24, 25 hunting season. Um, and then, obviously, this year, the program has extended, continued to extend and is now in Hazel Woods, McKinley, seldom seen, Southside Parks in Hazelwood, Greenway. Um, there's more detail in here, but I'm kind of hitting the highlights. And then, of course, they also provide educational programs and then emergency response within the parks. The Office of Public Information, under Public Safety, their main, uh, day-to-day is engaging with reporters across this city and across the country, and sometimes the globe, depending on the incident that occurs, and, but then they also work on strategy with us, things like, you know, training our zone supervisors and any general staff, um, working on the, once again, working on the draft communications to make sure we're all unified in that between all the agencies that's there. And then our social media engagement, um, which provides a lot of highlights to all the great work all of our first responders do every day, um, and they continue to provide that. Our Office of Film and Event Management, um, over the past year has, year, two years now, has transitioned to a new permit management system, which allows a much more user-friendly, uh, system for event permitting, whenever you're having a parade or an event, uh, some sort of activity outside on city properties. And then, we also recently added a public demonstration permit for things like protests, et cetera, to make it easier for folks to communicate with that, that with us, although it's not required, we do encourage it just because it helps us ensure everyone's safety. Um, we continue to work with Visit Pittsburgh and the Steelers for the NFL Draft with that team as well. And then, um, once again, they did receive the IFEA World Festival and Event City designation, um, from the International Festivals and Event Association. And in the past year, OFEM has received and processed 1,520 individual applications, 925 event permit requests, 428 block party permits, and 167 film permits, all which, uh, do receive some sort of funding, you know, fees, et cetera, through the city. Our Office of Nighttime Economy has expanded their outreach continuously to, uh, engage with business owners mostly that work within nighttime economy, so a lot of those are bars and restaurants, trying to help them, um, follow best practices to keep everyone safe, reduce crime and, and, uh, issues around that, as well as liaise with the police and public safety entities and the community to make sure our nighttime economy continues to thrive and grow in a way that's positive for everyone. Um, did do multiple citywide trainings, um, connect folks with, you know, with, uh, grant opportunities for nighttime economy and, um, related businesses, and then work through 3-1-1 complaints and violations as it goes. Um, and then, I will let David talk about the Office of Community Services and Violence Prevention.
Thank you, Mr. Director. One, several of our highlights are that we supported the First Responders Youth Basketball Game in February at West Penn, uh, we hosted a staring, a lock, um, staring thing that would, uh, we put out 96 locks in our communities, coordinated, uh, with the Hill District and Homewood and other, uh, opportunities with CEO, it's our community cleanup that goes, uh, throughout the, the cities. Uh, we coordinated six separate national night out events, the highest participation to date, designated a launch and de-escalation training program for local businesses in collaboration with the nighttime economy office, integrated educational workshops into Zone Council meetings to address pressing community concerns, including youth engagement, mentorship, early intervention strategies, and trauma-informed care. Our Safe Passes team employs, our youth, I'm sorry, employs up to 80 junior ambassadors that are given a stipend, uh, by the, the city to help them mediate problems in their, in their school system, Pittsburgh public school system. The Safe Passage program is currently in six public high schools throughout our city. Our Reach Team continues to be a vital partner in the city of Pittsburgh's public safety strategy, um, they have had more than 300 mediations during this time, and, um, helped to de-escalate countless high-risk situations, and we also have a downtown designated team just to help mitigate our, some of our problems downtown. Uh, additionally to that, we just have some, you mentioned collaborations that we have been working on that have been very, um, paramount in us, um, we were at Cities United, um, last month, and our city, uh, received an award, actually went to the mayor, but our city received an award around the work that we have done, uh, throughout our city that has been, um, kind of cutting edge. Uh, we've had an amazing relationship with our DHS partners, we meet with them on a weekly basis, uh, and additionally, they will be with us downtown for Light Up Night, we will have our, uh, Safe Passage team downtown with us as well. We also have an amazing relationship with Pittsburgh Public Schools, where our Safe Passage program is, and as a result, um, our, uh, all the students that are seniors, that have been seniors in that program have graduated, so 100% of that, and we continue to try to get upstream, um, in working with, with those. And last, but not least, uh, we also have a citywide, uh, prayer chain, that when violence happens in our community, uh, our team is notified via our NewAir412.com app to let, uh, our faith base know that it's time, violence has happened in our community and it's time to pray. And that has been very, um, I feel inspirational in our work that we've done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Anything else?
Um, we do have the Stop the Violence Grants, you know, the Stop the Violence Grant Program that is under Public Safety. The map here just shows, uh, grantees by neighborhood for last year, uh, the most recent grant cycle, as well as, um, a number of RFPs that are currently out and in the process around, uh, the anchor organizations, the, uh, group violence contract, um, et cetera. And then, um, Charles did add, the operating budget highlights, um, are pages from the budget, they're attached, um, as well as the Stop the Violence Trust Fund. Um, we'll note, the net addition, we did add 2.12 full-time positions to the budget, uh, those two positions were, um, Assistant Director, Alarcon's position and Assistant Director Jones's position were moved from the Stop the Violence Trust Fund into the general fund as a way to, uh, free up some dollars within the Stop the Violence Trust Fund. Um, and then, just a few contractual increases for, um, security at the City County Building and other locations, as well as rental agreements. And I'll take questions.
Thank you, gentlemen, and, uh, why don't we start this into the table first with you, Mr. President, or would you rather defer?
I really don't have any yet.
Okay, okay, good enough. Councilman Strasberg?
Thank you, I really just have one question, and then unfortunately I have to get to a meeting. Um, I'm wondering where we stand with our workload plan for the NFL Draft. I know that we are on the hook for supplying all public safety personnel, and I wonder what that means for partnering with other municipalities or in-kind services and, and where we are with developing that public safety plan.
Yeah, so we meet weekly, um, there's a large group of 50, 60-plus folks from not just the city, the state, the county, uh, et cetera, meeting to develop all those plans. Um, we will have a significant police presence between, um, majority will be Pittsburgh Police, State Police, and then, um, DCNR Rangers, uh, Fish and Game or Fish and Wildlife Commission, um, Coast Guard, and then federal partners as well. Um, EMS is working through their plan with the local EMS agencies, and then fire will handle, um, the, the fire response there. Um, we are still very much in the early stages of development for that, just because... We are still very much in the early stages of development for that, just because the draft, the NFL takes, you know, they, they turn this plan around pretty quickly, so right now they've given us just preliminary ideas, those sorts of things, but as we develop that, we can definitely make sure that's shared with councils. You guys are aware what those anticipated costs will be. I think we're still on board with what the original bid had, which I think was around a million or so dollars for those three days in city expenses. Again, it's, it's three days, twelve hours, but overall, it's not, from a police standpoint, it is fairly intensive EMS. Based on other cities, it's, we'll need a large presence, but it is, it's a, the number of transports and incidents that usually occur is actually less than our average Steeler game from, based on, again, what Green Bay, Detroit saw as far as transports to the hospital. But they do essentially set up a onsite first aid, pretty significant first aid station, staffed by physicians, et cetera, so they try to handle most things in-house as much as possible. And then from a fire standpoint, it did more just fire watch, making sure inspections are done, those sorts of things. I met with Director Green from PLI yesterday, just to get him kind of on board with some of this as well, to make sure he understands the inspections that are going to have to occur pretty quickly because they build a significant amount of infrastructure for the draft in a one-month or less period. So we will, you know, happy to discuss that with anybody further, but as, as these things develop, we will have a better idea of costs. But we're still, seem to be on track with our budgeted amount that we had put in the bid years ago.
Okay. My biggest focus here would be to ensure that our budget accurately reflects what we're expecting to, to, you know, have to put in, whether that's premium pay or, or otherwise. So if, if, you know, of course, if there's, if we're expecting what we put in for the bid, both for the, the amount that we're paying and the in-kind services we're providing through public safety and that's accurately reflected in, you know, this year's budget for the Bureau, or sorry, for the department, great. If that changes between now and the end of December, please let us know because we'd like to make sure that's accurately reflected in the budget for next year.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, I know it has been brought up, but I, I do have concerns that what's in the premium pay budget regardless of the draft is, it's probably a little light, but, you know, depending on how things change with administration and, and where we can find ways to cut, you know, it's something that we should be focused on, is trying to reduce that overtime in a variety of different ways. But yeah, I, I don't disagree that there's, probably needs to be researched a bit more.
If there, aside from the draft and just picking up on what you just said, if there are, you don't have to give me numbers now, but if there are numbers that you would think would more accurately reflect next year's expected premium pay budget, that's another thing that, you know, we'd love to know as council right now to make sure that, to the extent possible, we're taking that into account and, including that in the deficit we're solving for.
Yeah, and I can get you guys that numbers that Charles and his team kind of worked through.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Charlin.
All right, thank you for being here. I just want to make sure I understood correctly. You said that the second Stop the Violence Coordinator position that's being added, that's coming from the Stop the Violence Trust Fund and moving into the admin to free up spaces, is that, did I understand that right?
It's not, no, no. The Stop the Violence Coordinator was added to the Stop the Violence Trust Fund. The two Assistant Director positions that were in the Stop the Violence Trust Fund were moved to the General Fund.
Okay, thank you. That makes sense. Appreciate it. Is this the appropriate time to talk about the horses or should I wait for the police?
It's probably for police.
Okay. Be prepared. One, I really don't have a lot for you, but one question I do have, what is leading to the premium pay in the admin portion? You know, I understand premium pay concerns in fire, EMS, police. Why is public safety admin having such a high overrun and overtime?
So I think most of that is around our civilian staff that manages timekeeping and payroll for the bureaus. Those are, you know, police have five folks that manage payroll for seven-hundred-plus officers. We are working towards some newer systems that reduce the amount of data entry required, but it is still significantly, a significant amount of data entry, both on fire, EMS and police. They all receive overtime, as well as then zone clerks and civilians for those positions, like all the police zone clerks are eligible for overtime, so when they stay late to help process paperwork and work with commanders on things, they receive overtime for that. But we have been taking some efforts to work with those teams. But also, speaking frankly, I'm, many of that team gets paid forty thousand dollars or less, so they work, they're willing to do a lot of extra work if there's overtime involved, whether that be doing additional filing or paperwork because they need that extra money to, you know, increase their income. So I think those are discussions that we have had as we do some negotiations, that their, their base salary should probably go up a little higher so then they're not required, you know, living off that overtime and they're a little more focused on having a better work-life balance and not trying to get as much overtime either.
Are we, I mean, do we, do we have any measures of productivity during those overtime hours? I mean, I think.
Yeah, I mean, oftentimes it's, it's extra projects that have been, you know, if you walk into, I think, most offices in the city, there's old files that have been sitting there for years that, you know, and sometimes a campaigner or somebody will let them come in and, and help clean that out. But also, a lot of it really is just the intense amount of, with the timekeepers especially, it's the intense amount of data entry required for that. And as we develop systems and get systems connected, so they just talk to each other. I think I've brought it up before, but, you know, until earlier this year, the police had a system that they would have, essentially, they would have to read the screen from one and manually type it into the other. We've got those data connectivities increased over the past two years to reduce that need. But I think we have to, then they're, what they're doing is a lot of catch-up from work they've put off for a while, just because they're, the amount of data entry they had to do, so. I, I think we'll continue to see a decrease in that. I know earlier this year we didn't, but we did work to decrease that over the past six months or so and we'll continue to do that as we get more modern systems that interface with one another to reduce that data entry.
Are these work-from-home positions?
Some of them are hybrid. We don't have any, nobody in public safety works fully from home. The most, without some sort of an accommodation for ADA or something, if there's a medical condition, short-term medical condition, everybody has to work in the office at least three days a week.
Gotcha, okay. The other question I have for you, what, obviously, I'm very close to the Office of Nighttime Economy and one of the things that I know Allison has spent most of the year on is related to sound enforcement and, or not, sorry, not enforcement. She, I hope she wasn't watching, I hope she didn't hear that. She probably, she probably yelled at me. But trying to find ways to, to, to get in front of solutions on sound issues, how we can work better with neighbors, what can be done in terms of, of sound auditing. I know that that's something that she's talked about, you know, it doesn't really require very much money, but something that we would need some funding towards to try to figure out what those, what those solutions might be. Have, we've been able to have conversations with her about what the, the future of looking at better sound programs within the city might look like?
Yeah, we did put in a request for a sound engineer firm for us to have on board to help with some of that and then also some general code changes that would allow and empower the city itself to do enforcement around sound at licensed establishments especially. Right now, our police are, I mean, you, you know probably better than most council members how limited powers we have over licensed establishments. We did roll out decibel meters to all of our bure, or all of our zones now and have, in the process of doing some additional training with officers on how to work those, but with the anticipation that if the next administration will support it, we would continue to work towards a method in which the city can, our officers can actually do this noise and sound enforcement on liquor establishments.
Yeah, and, you know, I think a lot of what Allison has worked on is how to, how to get to the point where it's not enforcement and how do we, you know, sometimes, you know, Allison's very connected to the nationwide networks that, that can explain this, but sometimes it's like, maybe we need to move a speaker back four inches and that reduces the bass or, you know, I, I, reduces the bass that you hear from outside the, the bar and that doesn't bother people. But it is something that I think I, I would really like to see us to continue to find ways to, to support that, especially with kind of my push towards the, the work we're doing with venues. You know, I, it would, we, we've have examples of venues in the past that we've already lost because of, of sound. You know, one in my district, one in the North Side, that I would, would love to find us, you know, could never get to that point where we can figure out how to work with neighbors, how to work with, with everyone. And I think Allison is, you know, a real, we're very lucky to have her be able to lead that charge.
Yeah, and I, I, I'm fully supportive of that. I mean, I've been working with her on that and meeting with, with those venues, a bit around that. And I think when I say enforcement is more, if we take on the enforcement, then they follow our noise ordinance. I, I don't know if most people are aware, but currently in the state of Pennsylvania, in Allegheny County, the requirement is zero sound outside, beyond the footprint of your door. So even moving a speaker or doing something like that typically doesn't completely, reduce it down to zero. It would follow the city's ordinance, which is a lot more reasonable and easier to comply with. To the point, I think if we did that, we could easily do a campaign and, and support Allison and her team of one other person to do education campaigns and say, yes, you can have some sound, just be careful how loud it is. And the city's noise ordinance is much more reasonable than zero. It is very difficult to comply with zero because if somebody opens your door, they're going to hear it. So I, I think the, changing how the enforcement works is the first step and there's a different way to say that, but yeah. It's more bringing it into control of the city and letting us make those decisions for our communities and our neighborhoods as to how those establishments operate.
Awesome. Well, I'm very supportive of that and I think we need, probably have some longer discussions on that as well, so. Thank you, Mr. Chair, that's all for me.
Thank you, Councilman. Second round, Mr. President.
Thank you. Very quickly. Oh, sorry. Very quickly, just to follow up on the sound conversation, I actually wrote our current noise ordinance and it's come to our attention in my office that we may need to do some updating to it. So if you have suggestions, Councilman, if you wanted to work on that, I'd be more than willing to work with you on it. We've been dealing with a different sound issue on the North Side recently where a PWSA contractor has been working early in the mornings, has been working late in the evenings and we have residents who have taken video of it. We have residents who have put a decimeter apps on their phone, but what we've also come to recently learn is those don't, they don't stand up in court. You have to actually use an official decimeter, which when we wrote the noise ordinance, we actually wrote into the ordinance what decimeter type you had to use because I guess there weren't that many back then, but now technology has grown, so we should be able to say, no, there are other types. We've also been told that we don't have an officer who can enforce noise after eight P.M. Is that true?
No, I think construction, I'd have to, there are some difference with construction in the code between PLI and Waddomee permits most outdoor construction as to what our officers can enforce, but no, our officer, like at a bar, a restaurant or a, a party, our officers absolutely enforce past eight P.M. If, if somebody calls a noise complaint, you know, our officers will respond and tell them you need to turn the music down. Construction, I think, is something we probably need to coordinate with a couple other departments to see, similar to what I've done over the years with PLI around food trucks and other things that, our officers do have the ability to enforce any city code, but often they're not trained to do that, so they don't understand it. So it's probably something to talk to them about.
If, we should probably, we, we can follow up offline. I can bring you totally up to speed on, PLI's been in a part of the conversation, have cited the contractors for being, setting up on the city property when they didn't have, they don't have permits. Like, it's been a whole ordeal that we've been dealing with here and I can certainly bring you up to speed, but the police were indicating that their hands were sort of handicapped in terms of what they could actually do. They also indicated that they didn't have the decimeter. So if we are now distributing those, that's good to know. I'm not sure if Zone One has received theirs or anything, but we can follow up offline. Also, just to follow up on the Councilwoman's question on around the draft, it was my understanding that much of our public safety costs would be reimbursed from the state. Is that still the case?
I don't want to tell anybody we're getting anything until I know we actually have it, right? I know this state.
Those conversations.
Yes, those are conversations that are happening between the state and then the local organizing committee that holds, you know, the twelve million dollars or whatever it is now that, you know, both the city, the county, the state and others, private businesses put in. And then I know the state, in their budget, most recent budget does have a, again, their budget just came out, so. They do have money set aside specifically outlined for the draft, but I haven't had much discussions with Laura or anybody else from the governor's office to see exactly what that's earmarked for, how we can access that. Historically, yes, in other states, the state tends to reimburse some level of public safety services to any of the agencies that are working on that, but I, I think those are, again, are discussions we have to have with the state having their budget drawn out so late. I think that's put us behind on that discussion as well.
Okay, thank you. I do have to step away, so that's all for me, but I think Councilman Charlin's going to ask my question around the horses.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I was going to have, so.
You guys want to send for the glue factory? Save on office supplies. So, you know, thank you. Just a, just a follow-up to the Mr. President and Councilwoman Schlossberger. The million dollars that we approved for the NFL Draft was, unless I'm confused, was Councilman Schlossberger relating that to, like, that's going to be put towards our premium cost or no?
That I don't know. I wasn't involved in where that million dollars went. What, what I know is when we were, when the city and, and the county and Visit Pittsburgh all put the bid in for us to be a host city, we had to come up with a preliminary estimated public safety budget and that amount was one million dollars.
Okay, so we don't know if that's related to the money that we approved or not, I guess.
That I do not know. We can find out.
Yeah, okay. You know, first of all, Mr. Jones, I'm sorry, I got you wrong. It's David Jones, David Green, you know, it's been a long day, man, yeah. I appreciate that. So, you know, I just wanted to tell you personally, I appreciate the work you do. You know, I got to see, well, first of all, I want to say there's a real disconnect between the City of Pittsburgh and the school district, I feel, you know, for, on, on every level, pretty much. The only time I saw it bridged was with you, when you were in my alma mater, Bursheer High School, you know, working with at-risk kids and I was impressed. If we had ten of you, it would be wonderful, but I, I loved how you handled that situation. I loved how you spoke, stern and, you know. And I think it's just what we need. I mean, really, you know, to, to stop the violence, we need to get in our high schools and grade schools even, you know, so. So I was so happy to see that and so impressed with the way you handled it and your team. I, I can't remember exactly who was there with you, but, you know, I just remember walking out of there saying, you confronting these kids, you know, not chastising, not, you know, we weren't there to yell or scream at them, but you were talking to them and you were stern and I, I just thought it was very effective and I feel like we need more of that. So, and I love reaching out to faith-based organizations with Stop the Violence Fund. You know, I seem to be most supportive with faith-based operations. I just think they're more compassionate and, you know, driven and, you know, I think it's always good to bring faith-based organizations to the table. They, they don't mess around and I, I love it, you know, so I tend to, you know, want to champion them. them as much as anybody, and I think we have plenty of them. I, you know, there's a lot of them, I think, working within and around this city of Pittsburgh now with the Stop the Violence Fund, so.
Also want to say, to your point, Councilman, yes, I think prior to our Safe Passage Program, our relationship with Pittsburgh Public Schools is strained. I think that it has meshed in a very positive way over these past several years. Again, we meet, I meet with one of the assistant superintendents every Friday, and whether it's in their offices or we're going to one of our high schools that we're working in, and we also, you know, will communicate electronically during the course of the week. But it has helped immensely our adults in the school, working with the administration and also the young people, our safety ambassadors that we pay, has helped. And also, lastly, our communication system that we use through New Air 412 to help our adults in the school connect with our reach team when something happens, so they can get ahead of things. So it's just, our ecosystem has been developed and it's working very nicely, Councilman.
Yeah, that's great. That's great, great to know, great to see. The ambassadors are paid. Are they all students?
Yes, they're all students. They give them a stipend.
When they graduate, then?
Yes.
Okay, so it goes away once they graduate?
Yes, correct.
Okay, and you just find more students to take their place?
Correct.
Good, good, great, great. So, so no, I'm very impressed with what you do, and I don't have any other further questions other than Director, you know, we're going to wait, I know, to talk about the horses when the police come up. Would that be the same with ShotSpotter as well?
Well, we can talk about that.
I just have a comment. Somebody commented today in public comment, and, you know, they were saying, oh, it was no good, or it was a waste of money, or something like that, but every news report I see, every time somebody is murdered or there's a shooting, the first thing you see alerted by ShotSpotter every single time. So that is the case, is it not? We are alerted, our response time is dramatically, you know, shortened because of ShotSpotter.
Yeah, and I mean, I think you all received the controller's report of that. It wasn't a full audit, but it was kind of a review of the ShotSpotter program, and I understand how other cities have used it, was not necessarily the most popular, but I think that in the way that we use it is a tool rather than, you know, investigative information, is more a tool to get our officers and, more importantly, our medics and firefighters to a victim, and it's much easier for us to find the shooting that occurred with that rather than, unless somebody happens to witness it, right? Even if, even if people do call, oftentimes it's very hard to pinpoint where it is. If you're sitting in your house, or even if you're on your porch, you might hear a gunshot, but it could be, you know, that sound could bounce off a building, and we'll have officers respond, and you'll talk to four different neighbors and get four different directions as to where that came from. So the ShotSpotter is a way to get us there quicker, more efficiently, and with less, a lot less resources needed to find the location of victims. And yeah, there have been multiple times that we have not received, especially, you know, at 3:00 in the morning, most people are asleep, they don't hear it, or we don't receive 911 calls, we're able to get there, respond, and definitely save lives rather than, you know, if someone happening across a victim two or three hours later.
Anybody knows me knows I'm not about wasteful spending. If we don't need it, I don't want it, but I don't want to pay for it, but to me, it's, I lobbied hard to get it in Carrick. It's in Carrick now. I don't know if you have any stats on that, has it been triggered in Carrick, or?
It has, we can get, we'll have all those. I think somebody, I think Councilperson Warwick was talking about a post agenda.
Yeah, 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 yeah. No, just a response time. I've not met a police officer in a command, commanding role who disagrees with that, and I think it's a valuable tool and for that reason alone, so. So that's it, that's it for me. You know, we can move on to our last section. Thank you, Mr. Jones, for being here. I really appreciate. Sorry.
No one's online.
Okay, yeah, we have nobody online, so we're good to go. Next, we're going to do the Police Department. I'd like to invite those from the Bureau of Police to join us at the table. While you're joining us, I'll ask our Budget Director Peter McDevitt to give a brief overview of the department. Mr. McDevitt?
Thank you, Councilman. Through the commitment to professional service to all, the Bureau of Police is a source of pride for the city and a benchmark for policing excellence. The Bureau of Police stands ready to protect human life, serve without reservation or favor, stand as partners with all, and help all communities live free from fear. The Bureau of Police is divided into the Chief's Office and three branches, the Professional Standards, Investigations, and Operations, and there's a little bit more of a breakdown for you there. A position summary, there's a total of 844 full-time positions in the 2026 budget, that is down 31 full-time employees from 2025. The total number of uniformed employees, officers, is 800. The current uniformed full-time employees is actually at 716. Number of civilian employees is down from 75 to 44. Overall, that is a decrease of 1.6% or a little over 1.1 million. A summary of non-personnel changes in the Police Bureau's budget overall, there is a $65,344 increase, about $60,000 increase for professional and technical services, and that includes $50,000 added back in for stable hand contracted services for our standard side horses, and $16,000 for property services, which is an increase for the lease of Police Headquarters in Rockwell. And then other notably, there is about $21,000 decrease for property for the Axon Program, having a one-time budgeted decrease in 2026. Police has no capital projects in their budget, but we did note that vehicles for the Police Bureau are actually budgeted in the Public Safety Admin Operating Budget, and they have 1.375 million in 2026. And just to run through some trust funds real quick, they have the Police Secondary Employment Trust Fund, the Confiscated Narcotics Proceeds Trust Fund, the Confiscated Non-Narcotics Proceeds Trust Fund, the Graffiti Trust Fund, Public Safety Training Trust Fund, and the Mounted Police Trust Fund, and they have a number of fees outlined there for you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. McDevitt. Did you all want anything to add? We're joined, by the way, by our Acting Chief Marty Devine. Marty, welcome.
Thank you.
Yep. Did you have anything? Did you guys want to brief us on anything, or should we just get right into question?
I mean, we have a similar.
Okay, Charles, I thought so.
So we can run through that quickly.
Understood, yep.
I'm going to skip over here to our accomplishments. We have some demographic information here from 2024 that is here for reference, and here we have some of our accomplishments for the year, if the chief wants to go into those.
Yeah, absolutely. So a few of our compliments, accomplishments from 2025 include, we had collaborative engagement from the community, advances in technology, support from state, federal, and local partners, and implementation of targeted policing strategies. The Bureau has achieved a notable reduction in violent crime within the city. As of September, homicides have experienced a decrease by 34%. The Bureau will, the Bureau will have hosted two basic recruit classes in 2025. Additionally, had 53 recruits graduate at various times throughout the year. So Police Bureau transitioned all members to the new TASER 10 and introduced virtual reality training to all of its members on that same, on the TASER 10. In collaboration with the Indianapolis Metro Police Department, the Pittsburgh Bureau of Police hosted our first iteration of the Pittsburgh Bureau of Police Leadership Academy. As of September 20, or as of September 2025, the Telephone Reporting Unit has taken 8,660 reports to date, which equates to 48% of all police reports, which is great because that frees up our officers to address more serious issues.
Okay, and then we have a number of recruitment slides for the day?
We do, and for those, I'm going to call up Commander Tony Palermo, he's going to speak
Just introduce yourself, Commander, for the record, okay?
Commander Anthony Palermo.
Thank you.
So just some highlights. First, we'll start with total applications, that counts the number of candidates that signed up to be police officers and then actually took the written civil service exam. So if you look in 2020, we had a total of 212 applications. 2024, which we had our first efforts in full-time recruiting for probably half the year, we saw an increase up to 491. And then 2025, and these numbers are only through the end of October, we're at 483 with two more testing months left in the year. The November 2025 academy class, we had 38 recruits start that academy, which would be the largest recruit class in quite some time. Staffing wise, we have two full-time recruiters and then four active adjuncts that are consistently assisting with those efforts. Some other accomplishments on the recruiting front, we hosted two recruitment trainings. So we had a basic recruiter training class, and then just a few months ago, advanced recruiter training that were completed this year to better equip our recruitment team to be successful. Recruitment video, which was funded with grant monies, has concluded filming. We're now just in the editing phase, and hopefully we'll have a finished product here very shortly. Additionally, using grant monies, we were able to expand the capabilities in NeoGov, which is the hiring software that Human Resources uses for all the bureaus. So we're able to add text messaging capability, so our recruiters or HR folks can instantly reach out and connect with anybody in that applicant pool. And then we just recently started the transition over to a product called Vetted, which is part of NeoGov, which moves that background application process. Typically, the candidate will receive a paper packet that they have to fill out and mail back. This moves everything online, which will tell the applicant if they successfully completed it or not, and then also better able to track that through the whole hiring process, which will also decrease the time it takes to complete background investigations. The recruitment team, along with some members of the Training Academy, just recently attended and successfully passed a state-recognized physical fitness instructor class, so that will allow us to better put on physical fitness prep training and not have to rely on folks from the Training Academy and drain those resources. So our recruitment team will be able to run those and think of better ways to increase our pass rate on the physical fitness portion of the hiring process. And that is it.
Charles, Director?
I was going to say, yeah, back to the chief. I think we were talking about a slide on our unmanned aircraft systems.
Yeah, so in 2025.
Commander, you can stay, unless you have to go.
Nope.
Okay, okay. No, well, yeah, right, that's why I want him to kind of stay.
Thanks. All right, so in 2025, we finally, we finalized a policy related to unmanned aircraft systems, which are drones. We purchased four interior drones and five exterior drones, and they're used in the following ways. They're used for situational awareness, to assist decision-making via command and understanding the nature, scale, and scope of an incident, and for planning, coordinating, and effective response. We also use them for search and rescue to assist missing person investigations, Amber Alerts, and other search and rescue missions. We use them for tactical deployment to support our tactical, tactical deployment of officers and equipment in emergency situations. We use them for a visual perspective, to provide an aerial visual perspective to assist officers in providing direction for crowd control, traffic management, special circumstances, and temporary perimeter security. We also use them, our crime scene unit uses them for scene documentation, and so they're used to observe the full understanding of the scene, as well as accidents, crime scenes, accident scenes, and other major incidents, incident scenes. For example, disaster management, incident response, large-scale forensic scene investigations. All right, next, our 2026 strategic initiatives. The first one is stop the violence and reduce gun violence, so Director Jones helps in that department. Increase in community engagement, we're doing that by continuing the CARES program that was started under the leadership of Chief Scirocco. Addressing quality of life issues, which OCHS helps with that, and we're prioritizing officer Like I mentioned before, we're continuing our Pittsburgh Police CARES. I was designed with the goal of creating meaningful lasting relationships between law enforcement in the diverse neighborhoods of Pittsburgh by facilitating direct interactions between officers and residents through events, outreach programs, and problem-solving collaborations. We're bridging the gap and building a foundation of trust that is essential to effective policing. All right. So in 2025, this is addressing training. We invested approximately $200,000 in training and professional development for our officers. This allocation was critical, was a critical part of our ongoing commitment to ensuring that our force remains well-equipped to meet the evolving demands of modern policing. As we plan for 2026, we recognize the importance of building on this foundation to further enhance the skills, knowledge, and capabilities of our personnel. So our training goals for 2026 include our, continue our PVP Leadership Academy, which was started by Lieutenant Cunningham and Commander Abraham. We got great feedback on the first class that we had. Enhanced recruitment efforts, and like Commander Palermo had spoke about, but that's to include physical fitness events, marketing, and engagement. Another one of our goals is continued community-oriented policing, expand upon reality-based training via virtual reality, specialized skill training, active threat response, improved officer wellness initiatives, and advanced investigative techniques.
Yeah. All right, and as with the previous slide shows for reference here, we have copied the pages from the preliminary budget. Just flip through these real quickly here, for anybody who might be watching at home wants to pause real quick. And then, as Director McDevitt already said, overall, this is, involves a net reduction of 31 civilian positions, but it maintains the 800 budgeted uniform positions, and a lot of the additional funding for this year is centered on the aforementioned mounted And that concludes this portion of the program.
Thank you, thank you, Charles. And I didn't mean to put you guys last. It wasn't intended that way, but typically, the police has to be first because I know it's going to be long and drawn out and complicated, and people are going to have issues with lots of things. And full transparency, I'm very good friends with Marty Devine, and I do believe, under your leadership, there's a lot less drama, a lot more continuity between, you know, the rank and file, and of course, with the leadership of, you know, Mr. Schmidt here, who's, I felt, has done a really, really good job. So thank you for filling in as the Acting Chief. I think you already had the respect of everybody in the Police Department, and you demand respect, so I really appreciate the job that you stepped in and have done through this really, you know, unsteady, turbulent times, which, you know, that we all knew dating back to last year. You know what? I've got no drama in front of my desk over at a past, since, really since you've taken the Acting Chief job, so I appreciate you, and I appreciate the Director and what you've done with this Police Department since, and I feel like everything's moving in the right direction. Commander Palermo, I know you're doing a great job at recruitment. It's right here in front of us, so thank you for that as well. And I know I'll turn it over to Councilman Charlin, he's got some issues, I think.
Well, thank you for the kind words.
You're welcome. You deserve them.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, so I do appreciate you guys being here, and, you know, sorry for keeping you here so long, a long day with these hearings and how they go, but the first question I want to talk about is overtime. Obviously, that's the thing that, it was the single first thing that I looked at when I opened up the budget when it first was released, looking at overtime within the public safety bureaus. And, you know, I know that there are things that you were doing to try to mitigate how much overtime you need. I also know that, you know, from my understanding of the operations in my zones, we need more overtime. There's a lot of really, you know, useful things that happen in those overtime shifts, the violence prevention units and things like that that are pulling a lot of guns off the street that are. The violence prevention units and things like that that are pulling a lot of guns off the street that are supporting the, you know, more day-to-day operations. You know, I just wondered if you could talk a little bit about that, what you think that we should do moving on to the next year here with what I think Director Schmidt said, something that we need to study and something that probably is a cause for concern.
So the question is, how do we reduce the overtime?
Well, how, yes, or.
It's simple. Hire more police officers. So we, so the overtime is used to backfill our vacant positions. And a lot of times, it's based on need in a specific zone. Like, for example, every weekend, overtime is hired to help with the South Side. There are times where it could be a special event. It could be just a regular shift that happens to be short, or it could be a shift that isn't exactly short. However, there's something going on, like some emergency where it's taking a lot of resources, whether it be in that zone or in other zones. So, I mean, it's, if we hired more officers, that would be fantastic. Would it reduce the overtime? I believe it would significantly if we got up to the number that I believe that we should be at. But in the meantime, I know that we have exceeded our overtime budget, but it's also my understanding that we're not dipping into a budget from another bureau because a lot of that money that's being used on overtime now are, is the money that was set aside for the eight hundred police officers. So the vacant police officer positions kind of cover the overtime.
What number do you believe that we should have as a number of officers?
Putting me on the spot.
Absolutely. Well, we did pay a lot of money to find out this answer. So curious, curious what you think.
So in my twenty-six years in this bureau, I would, it's just my own opinion, I would say no less than nine hundred.
No less than nine hundred?
Yes. However, even when we had twelve hundred, police officers would say we're always short. But I believe to give the, to give the city intervisitors the proper safety, public safety, I would say no less than nine hundred. That's just my opinion.
So I do want to talk about recruitment in a second. I've also been told that I need to ask about this video. But before we get there, one of the things that we looked at in the past, you know, was the idea of civilianizing some of the roles. And the union's not gonna like me for saying this, but what, can you tell me why that wasn't possible? It made a lot of sense to me that we would have folks in, you know, in the evidence rooms or folks in the manning kind of the front desk at stations, be civilianized roles. Is there any ability to try to renegotiate that with the union, work through what that might look like?
Yes, so, no, it wasn't, the union didn't have an issue with it.
Oh, I thought they did.
We meet with the union regularly. We have a very good, I have, me and the command team have a very good rapport with them. We're able to work through our issues and the way that it was set up to fill the property rooms, it would be the crime, or the evidence, evidence, what were they called? Evidence techs. No, they were, that was something else. So it was the, I can't remember what, exactly what they're called.
Property and evidence technician.
Here you go. Property and evidence technicians. We were supposed to receive four? Four in twenty twenty-five, and that has since been pushed to twenty twenty-seven. We also asked for the crime scene and evidence technicians that would supplement police officers not doing their duties, not taking, not replacing them, but to supplement police officers in our crime scene unit. And I believe there were six?
Four.
Four of those as well. I apologize. I don't have the numbers exactly right. There were four of those as well that got pushed to twenty twenty-seven.
No, so just for clarification, in the preliminary budget that was presented in September, that was the case. After some back and forth with OMB and the administration, we did get, so this, the current budget now allows for two property and evidence technicians and two crime scene technicians for the twenty twenty-six budget here. The union is not opposed to civilianization as long as it's done through attrition. And as long as they are not doing exclusive work of the union. So things like writing citations, investigating crimes, those sorts of things is different than managing the property room and evidence or collecting evidence at a crime scene.
But it has to be done through attrition.
Yeah, the union won't fight us if it's done through attrition. And so I think that's where we ended up with these two numbers, like get them started, add those two there, get them to learn from the officers while the officers are still here and then as officers retire or move, you know, elsewhere, we can continue to increase the civilian positions within the bureau.
I apologize for the air.
No, it's more, it gets confusing because, you know, we switch stuff between September and
Yeah.
the final. And then additionally, you know, I hate to bring it up again, but we tend to pay our civilians significantly below market. And even in these positions, I think they're.
Yeah, one of those that he's, I was going to bring up if he didn't, was the administrative specialist position that is, there were thirty-two budgeted last year. There's twenty-four because those eight, we could simply not get those eight filled, pardon me, those eight filled. And it's, it's a forty-one thousand dollars is the salary, I believe, forty, around forty thousand. It's, and again, having to live in the city, it's just a challenge to recruit for those.
Yeah, and when you look at the two positions I mentioned, crime scene technician, that's what, a fifty-five thousand dollar salary? Property and evidence technician is a
About forty-two.
Forty-two thousand dollar salary. You know, I understand they don't have the specialized training as a police officer, but how well can that position get filled next year? Because even the property room, we did have some of those positions open and we were looking to recruit this year, but we were trying to get those wages up to a little higher because we understand the challenges around that, especially the crime scene technician, you're still gonna ask people to work off-shift evenings and then they're going out in the field, whether, you know, rain, storm, whatever it might be, and collecting evidence for a salary of fifty thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, I mean, I would hope that some of those positions could be a pathway into leading to becoming a recruit. You know, if that is the way that we look at them. But yeah, I, it just, you know, I understand that what we can pay officers, you know, is, in a lot of cases, not competitive with the markets around us. I just, I think this is a kind of a good way to not need some of these positions or be able to have more officers in the field and less officers, you know, doing some of these other roles here.
If I can make just a
Yeah, go ahead.
If I can make a slight correction here, the crime scene technician is actually budgeted at approximately seventy thousand and fifty-five. It's just that they're not, they aren't budgeted for a full year of hire. Only, only part of the year, we're not gonna actually hire those positions until probably second quarter, as far as the budget is concerned. But the point still stands for the, for say, the dispatchers or administrative specialists or what have you. Those are still, there's definitely sub-fifty K, sometimes sub-forty-five K positions. So that point still stands as far as recruitment.
Gotcha. Alright, so as far as recruitment, I know you kind of touched on it. You said two classes went through this year?
Two classes started this year, yes.
Just started this year. Last one was the biggest class that we've had in a while.
Yes.
You know. How many classes do we plan on putting on next year?
I believe I was told two.
Another two.
February and August.
Okay. And will those be as large as this one?
So the February class, we already know it will not, and that was due to the fact of us getting, working with the other government entities, HRO, MI, everybody involved, to get set Academy start dates month-wise so we could better project and also in a recruitment end, we can tell an applicant based on when they apply, when, what their projected Academy start date would be. So our recruitment period, for lack of better terms, was a lot shorter for the February class than it was for what we would normally have. So we don't expect to have, we may end up that way, just looking at past data. We don't, we didn't have as many applicants in that initial poll when we started processing for the Academy class in February.
Gotcha. Well, you know, I think it speaks volumes that the volume of the class that we were able to start, the second class this year, what, how, how long does the Academy take? Remind me?
I want to say it's right around thirty-three weeks, thirty-four weeks.
Okay, gotcha. And so I've, I'm told I need to ask about this recruitment video. I guess the first take has been done. Do you want to talk about it a little bit?
What I can say is they came in for, it was probably over a course of four days or so, various times, took a bunch of B-roll film, voice-overs. There was a vision, kind of an initial vision given to the production team. Kara Cruz, one of our PIOs, helped tremendously in helping to coordinate all the moving parts. And we received an initial edit. It was done within two days. And then at that point, the chief, myself, a bunch of others, gave things we liked, we didn't like. We met with the producer last week, or actually earlier this week. So they're making notes, making edits, and they're gonna come back in and kind of reshoot a couple other things. So right now, we're kind of in that editing process to find, to get to the point of what we, we want it to be.
Cool. Well, I'm excited to see it. You know, I think, I'm, I'm one excited that it didn't cost taxpayer dollars because you were able to grant fund it. But I also hear that it, that it looks pretty cool. So.
Yeah, the initial edit, even being turned around pretty quick, was pretty impressive. So I think by the time we get to the final product, we're gonna be pretty happy with it.
Very professional.
And you didn't ask Councilman Calkel to play a cop. He looks more like a cop than you guys.
I didn't get, I didn't get to that point yet. That's in the final edit.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, okay. So the last, last question I have for you is about the horses. So I have had a very challenging year with these horses here. So we originally, you know, I was happy to get rid of them. Then they were very useful in Zone Three during St. Patrick's Day. So we wanted to try to bring them in more often, especially as the weather warmed. That seems to be when we have more issues with crowd control, that the police were, or the police horses can be very effective in. We were told that that's not really what the horses are for. They're more for community relations. In which case, I said, like, we should not spend one more dollar on them. If we want a petting zoo, let's get a petting zoo. What, you know, I guess in the past couple, or Halloween weekends, the horses were used again in the South Side. Again, I think, you know, they have the potential to be very effective there. We did run into a very, a problem that we've, I know has been discussed at this table before with horse droppings. I don't know how to say that another way.
Dung.
Dung, yeah. That was a real issue in South Side. You know, if they are gonna be something we use more often, we need to figure out how to clean up after that. I don't know. Public Works didn't want to do it. They didn't want to drive a street sweeper through it. I understand that. I don't know what the solution is. But, you know, the business district manager is like on the phone with me Monday mornings, like, what, what can we possibly do about this? We argue, if that's the plan, we do need to figure something out there. But what does the future of the horses look like?
I agree with you as far as that's concerned.
Yeah.
The future is, the kid, or the plan is to use them like in the South Side in areas where they're needed, not as a petting zoo. I too agree with you that if that's what they're gonna be there for, then why do we have them? Why do we spend, you know, money on them? And I, and I can just show that that's what the plan moving forward is because we just trained eight additional part-time riders for the horses. So we could have some more coverage if if the other riders aren't available. So I hope like once the weather gets, in the springtime, we're able to utilize them more down in the South Side. I mean, I would like to, no, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna be in this role next year, but I know that like Chief Scarrato's idea was to have them down in downtown regularly. That never came to fruition, but I mean, that makes a lot of sense to me. And I completely agree with you, with your stance on horses.
Yeah, I mean, I guess my thing is just that if they're gonna be used, like, if we're gonna have them, they have to be useful.
Absolutely.
We have a budget here where we don't have space for, you know, things that aren't useful. And that's, you know, I, when I heard that they weren't willing to come out on the South Side on Friday and Saturday and Sunday nights, when we really needed them, I was like, you know, there's
Why do we have?
There's no use for them here, so.
Well, hopefully, we were able to maneuver around that by adding additional riders.
Okay. Yeah, I think the, the model that I would recommend we look at, which is kind of what the chief's alluding to, is more similar to what the county does with their mounted unit. We would A, have some, which is what's in the budget for this year. We would have either laborers or a contractor provide the stable hand services. And then they would also take and maintain the horses and then deliver them, potentially clean up after them. There's also some options around bags and things that are questionable, whether we should use them or they're safe for the horses or not. But, and then part-time riders. So they would not be a full deployment of officers every day, five days a week, or four days a week, working ten-hour shifts on the horses. It would be, you know, here's an opportunity for everybody on a mounted unit to come work down, you know, not everybody. There's only five horses left now to come South Side or First Night or St. Patrick's Day or these large events. Especially with the draft, I think they will be fairly useful for that as well. But anytime we have larger crowds, but yeah, I would agree there. Although they are a very nice community engagement option.
Absolutely.
They bring a lot of attention. Everybody likes it. The return on investment is probably not there for that purpose if we're not using them for policing purposes as well.
Yeah, everyone loves the picture of the kids petting the horses. It's just, you know.
Yeah, and even the folks on the South Side at two in the morning, like they get pictures with the horses.
We're working on that. But yeah, I mean, and to the point, I emailed Charles about this maybe a month ago, but it was, I do remember us having a discussion about bags. I really thought that we did buy, you know, horse diapers. But I, I remember people, I remember council members at the time complaining about how expensive they were. I, I guess I don't remember how the story ends, but you told me that we didn't end up buying them.
Yeah, we did do some search through our archives. We couldn't find, I mean, I suppose it's possible there might have been something that we just didn't locate, but we didn't, we did not have a, have a, we did not locate records of a purchase of any kind of those devices. I think there was some concern about whether, as Director Schmidt alluded to, there's some concern about whether they're sanitary for the horses, which of course, then, you know, which is the, of course, then it creates a sanitary issue for people, so.
Sure.
But I think it's certainly with the additional funding that we're expecting, that's something we can revisit.
Okay. Well, thank you guys for, for everything you do. And, you know, I have a, an unbelievable relationship with my, my officers and the kind of command staff over in my zone, so could not be more thankful for having them there and having the relationships with, with you and with them that I do.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Sher? Thank you, thank you, Councilman Charlin. And you know, I want to say, I don't think it was the cost of the diapers. It was who was gonna change them.
I thought the same thing.
And the wipes. The wipes are outrageously expensive.
Need some powder too.
But I'm glad you brought that up. So, you know, we've been kicking it back and forth about the horses for, how long have we been kicking it back and forth? Couple of years now, Director? And you just complicated things more now, you know, now you're in favor. I, I go back and forth myself. I don't know which way. So it was great to hear your opinions on that. Obviously, yes, we don't want to use them as a, as a petting zoo. But like you said, Chief, get them out as often as you can, downtown, South Side. I mean, almost every weekend they should be there. And they're just a great presence and they demand respect when they come walking down the street, you know. Chomp, who's my buddy, I got to meet down at the stables. He's, you got Chomp? You know Chomp?
I don't know.
He's a big white, big white. I don't want to say horse. Is he a horse? But, but anyway, you know, I mean, they, they really do. There's a certain amount of just like respect that comes like, who? Get out of their way. So anyway, yeah, I guess we'll have to kick it around, but we're gonna keep them at least until the draft and then we'll see what happens from there, right? We've been kicking this can down the road for some time. So. I really don't have much, but I did want to ask you just a couple of things. Uh, I, I really don't have much, but, um, I, I did want to ask you just a couple of things, um. First of all, there is no position for me in the recruitment training film, is that right? Just kidding, of course. We wanna retract, we wanna attract candidates, we don't wanna detract them, but, um, the, um, drones, okay, the drones. You said, Marty, did you say we just got new drones?
Yes.
Okay.
We do.
Because I remember the Garfield situation, right? It was only, what, a year ago, two years ago, maybe? So I understood like the county, Vic Joseph came in, he said, we're using their drones, because our drones were in a box and we weren't using them for some reason or another. That's not the same drones that we've had boxed up, is it?
No, we got brand new drones.
We got brand new drones, okay, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the reason why they were in a box is because of the, uh, policy hadn't, hadn't been finalized.
Right, I knew there was something screwy behind that, so. But we're allowed to use these drones in any situations now?
Yeah, so there's a couple of things. One, yeah, we had to work, which I, I worked with, uh, you know, you and Blake on the policy to make sure it was good with council, um, but also the, the technology changed over the years and the, the cameras that were in the original drones are not in compliance with federal regulations around what cameras were allowed to use for public safety. Um, we are, however, still utilizing those two drones for training, so um, whenever we have new drone pilots that are learning, we use those rather than
Okay, great, great. We're putting the old ones to use just for training purposes. They all fly kind of the same.
Right, and then the, the advantage of the new drones we purchased is they interface and they're part of the same system we use for the body worn cameras.
Um, the interface meaning like video?
Yeah, so like
So you could like talk to somebody in a room while the drone's hovering?
I don't know if you
Well, I, I'm not sure if any of our drones have, I think they do have talking capability, but no, more around, we didn't need a separate piece of software or separate application, so like our real-time crime center or myself or the command staff, if they want to see what's going on in an incident, we log into one system and we can view the drones, we can also view officer's body worn camera, or we can view car video all live at the same time through one interface, and all synced kind of together, so we can see it all at once.
You know, and, and I'm sure of many situations you all are faced with throughout the year or years. I just feel like there's such a, such a great tool to have, to see what's around that bend or around that corner or in that house or whatever, you know, so. Um, yeah, I fully support those. We have five which are fully operating and we can use in any crime scene or anything that's going on, it's, it's invaluable. Um, we talked about the, uh, the confiscated narcotics trust fund. What kind of money is in that? Does anybody know here at the table?
Right now?
How much or what?
Yeah, how much?
Where does it come from?
Like, what's it generate? What's it, what's the balance in it?
Yeah. About one point five million.
So what, what, what are we in, what can we use that for?
So it is restricted use.
Okay.
Um, so that is money that is seized, seizure money.
Sure.
So we work with the D E A.
So, so when there's a, a drug bust or something sort, and then there's cash with that person, that cash is then seized by us and that's where this money comes from.
Right, but it, we don't receive the money until the case is adjudicated. So it, it, sometimes that money takes three or four years before we receive it. And then, um, and I can share this with council if anybody wants to read it, but there is a, uh, there's guidelines for it. It, it's called equitable share program under the, uh, D O J.
Uh, with the share with other municipalities?
Well, what happens is, the reason it's called equitable share is if we respond, let's say we go with the D E A and it's in the city, but it was our case and it's their case, there, there's a formula that gets figured out, the D E A gets a portion of those monies. If the county police were there, they get a portion, the D A's office gets a portion, we get a portion. It all gets calculated out. Um, the, the biggest thing that you have to be careful as a municipality that you do not do with that money because it, it's very clear in the guidelines, is you may not use that to supplant your budget in any way. So we did use that to purchase the drones, because those are items.
Well, thank you. I, I was wondering, like, I don't remember seeing the drones, right?
Basically for items that we would not normally be able to purchase with general fund dollars, we can purchase with that.
Well, that's good, that's great.
Yeah, we can't use it for the opposite of that. We cannot use it to buy things we normally should have to buy.
Right, 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 oh, that's great, that's great, that's great, because drones, I'm, I don't know what they cost, but sure they're not cheap, and, uh, you know, so. So that's, that's great, that's great you said. And what happens with the actual drugs? Are they stored in some compound somewhere?
No, so just a little caveat to what the director was saying. So there has to be federal charges, so that all has to go through the federal system. If there's state charges, that money goes through the D A's office. Uh, the drugs, the same with the court system, it goes through. Once the, uh, once the, um, it goes through trial or whatever the outcome is, and then once it's realized or it's determined that there could not be, there can't be any more appeals, then those drugs get destroyed.
Understood, yeah. Um, the, the other thing was, uh, Rockwell, we mentioned Rockwell. Peter, you mentioned Rockwell. Uh, we put money aside for that possible relocation. How much did we put aside for that? So Rockwell, I don't know, Council?
Four hundred and
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 come on up to at least at a podium, please.
Around four hundred and thirteen thousand.
Set aside.
Set aside.
For Rockwell, if and when we make that move.
Yes.
Okay. I was at the site with the director and at the time Larry Scrotto and Councilwoman Warwick and and I think, uh, Josh Berger, because, and, and, and Cory Mosley. And that was, Bobby, in case you don't, this is a, a site which, um, we have two very old police stations at four and five, both like need millions and millions of dollars of repairs. They gotta get out basically at some point. But this new site, the developer, you know, he, he of course wants a police presence there, which is great, you know, I don't blame him for that. Ideal for these two police stations combined as one, is that correct, right?
They would be co-located there while
Yeah, yes, yeah, right, still two separate police stations, but located in the one facility. Um, you know, relatively cheap compared to if we have to renovate where they're currently at. One's in an old firehouse, right, and it's, it's like dreadful inside. Um, but, so, so where is that? We have a four hundred and thirty thousand dollar set aside. Are we just like waiting on that to see what happens? What, where, where are we going with that?
Um, yeah, so right now we are still working on, um, basic and final designs. We had, the original design would not uh, accommodate everything we needed in it, so we had to make some adjustments to that as well as um, find some funding for additional infrastructure, wiring, et cetera there. Um, we have, um, it is still budgeted and it will be up to the next administration to kind of decide if they wanna move that forward.
Still on board, he's
As of right now, yeah.
Wants us there still, the space is still there. I really think it's the, that's the way to go. It's not my side of town or my districts, but it just makes sense after you toured the place with us, and I, I think you'll get support from this council on it, you know, when that time comes. And, uh, so, um, is there anything else you all wanna add? No? So, like I said
Appreciate you two sticking around.
Yeah.
The other members of council are starting to give me a complex.
And again, take it as a badge of honor that you were last, right? Typically, it's like, oh my gosh, I'm pleased to inform it. But I knew you were gonna be the least controversial, which is a badge of honor for everybody at this table and beyond, I will tell you, so.
The, these guys like overtime.
Yeah, right. He doesn't get overtime.
I don't get it.
Neither one of them get overtime. That's why we're gonna have a hard time finding commanders, especially if there's no tax on overtime eventually, so. It's something to consider. I don't know if that's gonna go through, but so, at any rate, um, if, if you have anything else to add, Director, or?
No, I just want to thank everyone, uh, on the team for the great work they did with the presentations today, and then, uh, we will be back Thursday.
Yep, 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 thank you, thank you, thank you for what you do. You know you have big supporters, at least in these two right here, I will tell you, on this, uh, council. And I think most of council, so, uh, we appreciate what you do. Been doing a really great job, and just keep up the good work, thank you. And with that, if there are no further questions, can I have a motion to recess the meeting?
So moved.